Duncanville City Council agenda being called to order six o'clock for our working session Tuesday, March 2nd of the year 2021. I can't believe it's March. So in accordance with the order of the Office of the Governor issued March 16th of 2020 and extended by the Office of the Governor, June 12th, 2020, the City Council for the City of Duncanville will conduct city council regular meetings by video conference at 6:00 PM Tuesday, March 2nd, in order to advance public health goal of limiting face-to-face meetings in an effort to slow the spread of coronavirus 19 pandemic. This is an open meeting conducted by video conference. There will be no public access to a physical location. When we get into the city council, we do have some citizen comments. One individual has asked to speak and two individuals have submitted comments that I will be reading just to let you know, and I will ask that individual when we get to city council meeting itself that that individual will have two minutes to speak and I will cover that in more detail when we get to city council. A recording of the meeting will be made available to the public in accordance with the Open Meetings Act upon written request. So audiences in listen mode and each council member as we go through, if you wish to speak in the participant, well, actually in the participants list, there is an icon called raise hand. If you would like to speak, please, please click on that. And if, if it's easier, go ahead and just wave in front of the camera, either I or Kristen will be able to see that and call upon you to speak. As we go through the sessions, as we have done in the past, all votes taken will be by a roll call vote. And the secretary will be reading that. Okay, getting into our working session. The first thing that we have on the agenda, item number one is the discuss the agenda items and interim city manager. Well, first, Paul Frederickson is going to take the lead on this because our new city manager, Aretha Faro Benavides is with us. Good evening, Mr. Benavides. Good to have you with us. And Paul is going to be taking, he's going to be, okay, what should we say? He's going to be doing it, okay, to give Ms. Benavides a little bit of a break with, this is her first week on the job. Our second week on the job, actually, just getting into that. So, Mr. Frederickson, I think now we have to officially call you Assistant City Manager rather than Interim City Manager. Got used to that for several months, but if you would, cover consent items, please.
Absolutely, Mayor. Members of the city council, before you on your consent agenda, you have for your consideration the minutes of the February 2nd city council meeting. Item B is a resolution authorizing the word of a bid with Anderson Asphalt and Concrete Paving for our Mill and Overlay Program of an amount not to exceed $766,623.60. This is for our 21 Mill and Overlay Program is provided in your, in the staff report. This will include approximately 15 road sections this fiscal year for improvements for the Mill and Overlay Program. Item C is considering a resolution to enter a joint election agreement, election services contract with Dallas County and other jurisdictions holding election from May 1st, 2021, to be administered by the Dallas County Elections Administrative Courts with subchapter D of Chapter 31, Chapter 271, and Chapter 271 of the Texas Election Code. You will.
Mr. Let me interrupt just for a quick minute, just for council's recollection. The last time we did have a city council meeting, we had some objection to what the county was doing in terms of costs and allocations. We voiced our objections to City Secretary Kristen, who handles all this, and that objection was given to the elections director of elections and response given back to us. And that is pretty well covered in the, in the item as well. So just wanted to interject that. So excuse me, Mr. Frederickson, go ahead.
Absolutely, and that's a good point. Our objections were not only given to Dallas County. A number of other cities were also objecting to the way that the vote center operations were going, moving forward. You will see that this is a contract up to $53,000, so that is an increase based on what we had budgeted. If there is a runoff, there'll obviously be additional increase. We do not have that amount at this, at this time. Item D is consider resolution authorize the amendment to the existing purchasing agreement with Olson Electric for installation, maintenance, and repair services for various city departments. Due to the spending of some of the CARES Act funding and some other unanticipated expenses, we are asking to take this contract and move it up $75,000 to not to exceed $125,000 with Olson Electric. Item E is consider resolution authorizing the first renewal of janitorial services for the Duncanville Fieldhouse and a contract increase in the amount of $24,000 for a new annual amount of up to $93,500 with DNA building services. And a lot of this has to do with the Fieldhouse trying to, again, stay active in increasing the number of activities, tournaments, and so forth. Also, in accordance with our COVID regime of keeping the facility as clean as possible, a lot of these costs do get passed down to the events as they come in. But it's important for us to, to maintain that regimen in the Fieldhouse. And again, as they're moving forward, doing as much as possible to keep our facilities clean. And I might add, one of the things that we have been fortunate is receiving comments from the public about our facilities and how clean they are when we have guests that are coming in, we received a number of comments. So that's extremely important for us, especially as we market the Fieldhouse. Councilmember Cook, did you have a question? And you're on mute.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Paul. Wash, or is that just, when you talk about that increased cost for the, you know, total service, is that a wash when you're passing over to participants as using their facility?
I, I think it's close to a wash. I think there's some additional things that we have done as far as, as part of the regular cleaning services beyond just the tournaments, but a lot of that is shifted over to the tournaments and those costs. It's not an exact wash, but it's, it's, I think, pretty close.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Item F is consider a resolution authorizing the receipt of a grant from the Texas Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division for rifle-resistant body armor program to provide funding to the police department to purchase nine sets of resistant body armor for our police department in the amount of $16,650. This is an award that we're accepting from the Office of the Governor for the body armor. Item G is res- authorizing the receipt of a grant from the, the governor of a amount for an additional order of body armor grants. This had to be separated because it was a separate funding cycle and a separate amount. So this is for an additional 18 sets of the rifle-resistant body armor for police officers from our department. And that total grant value is $33,300.
Mr. Frederickson, one moment, please. Mr. Harvey, you had your hand up?
I did. Thank you. I want to go back to 4B, which is the milling and overlay of city streets.
Yes, sir.
There's a, there's a statement here that I was curious about. It says that the treatment involves milling the top few inches of damaged asphalt pavement and then overlaying the street with fresh asphalt pavement to create a new driving surface, which is estimated to last 20 years. Is that 20 years with or without maintenance?
Let me ask Kelly Machesney, she's handles our street operations and Kelly could answer that question as far as the durability of the Mill and Overlay Program. Kelly, do you want to?
There will be maintenance. There's crack sealing that we have to do like, oh, every four or five years. It just depends, but the, but the maintenance is minimal. And so it's 20 years with minimal maintenance.
Okay, at what, at what point does the street need to be reconstructed altogether?
It just, if we keep it overlaid and keep the crack sealing, it may never have to be. It'll be decades, but if water enters the cracks of the, you know, say, it should never have to be reconstructed unless it's allowed to deteriorate due to, usually due to water.
And, and in addition to the, into the, in addition to the water causing deterioration of the streets, the ground underneath the streets also shift, doesn't it?
Um, sometimes, but normally not if the subgrade has been compacted correctly and it's in the right materials used. That could happen, but normally it doesn't.
Well, some of the other cities that I've worked with, one, one of the things that leads to overlay is the fact that the ground shifts here in North Texas. I was just curious if we were subject to that.
That can happen. Go ahead, Greg.
This is, this is great. It does, it, it's happened in a few areas in Duncanville. So again, one area is the area by Cedar Ridge by the post office, which is one of our bond projects where it's degraded. Swan Ridge, which is another project between just east of Cedar Hill Road is another area that's degraded to the point. And in both those cases, it was subgrade failure due to, as you were saying, shifting soil, sir.
Are those, are those residential streets and, and also is, is there any plan being discussed to address those streets?
So Swan Ridge is a residential street. Cedar Ridge is a commercial arterial. And we, as we, as we see them and, and as they, they come up, then we, we bring them up. But typically, these are projects that we would yield CIP. That would be part of a budget. We do try to partner with the utility fund.
Part of, part of a budget or part of a bond? Part of a budget or part of a bond?
Well, we got what we could get with the, the bond. And so any further CIP repairs would be part of an annual budget request, sir.
Okay, so is the level of commitment we currently have to street maintenance sufficient to address that and prevent streets in the near future from failing similar to Swan Ridge and Cedar Ridge?
Um, as we mentioned in the, every year in the, in, as part of the budget cycle, the pavement study that we commissioned in 2015 recommended $3.5 million for the maintenance of the city streets. And typically, we get in the range of one and a half to $2 million a year is what we've been for the last three.
Sounds like that's going to be difficult given Senate deal too.
Our, our straight program to your question is, is underfunded and that's been highlighted at, at multiple budget meetings. So again, as Mr. Ramey has indicated, we have so much for the bond program and then for our CIP and regular maintenance programs. And again, this was been highlighted, the idea is to prevent the streets from getting into a condition that they have to be reconstructed, which is much more costly for a city to address.
I agree. Thank you.
And Mr. Harvey, you are absolutely on the nail and dead on in terms of the impact of SB2 on the budgeting process, not only for what we had to go through last year, but probably for the out years in terms of what our legislature is going to be doing. There's, there's no clear indication. Well, I've had some discussions with those individuals involved in what's going on in Austin right now. And the indicators are that there is going to be very little change to SB2 in going forward. So being as our legislature meets every other year, whatever comes out of this 87 session, we'll see, we'll definitely be working with 2022 and possibly into 23 and years beyond. Mr. Anderson, I saw your hand up. Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor, a comment, not a comment about the roads, but a comment about the solution, keeping up the roads, is to more efficiently take the rest of our land that we have for economic development, including redevelopment of the shopping centers and other properties and make them the most efficient we can per square foot, price per square foot that they produce enough money to support the city. So every new development should be measured by the square foot to see if it actually puts money in the city long term or it doesn't. So that's just my comment about the solution.
Understood, acknowledged, and thank you. Okay, Mr. Frederickson, I believe you are on.
Item H.
H for H.
Yep. Item H, consider resolution authorizing the application and acceptance for receipt of a grant from the Texas Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division Justice Assistant Grant Program to provide funding to the police department in order to purchase the rope, a one robot team individual robotic intelligence system, long-range Iris LR that will be used in the support of the Police Department Special Operations Unit with a total grant value of $39,000. And item I, which is a consideration of resolution authorizing the acceptance of a North Central Texas Council of Governments in FY 20 Homeland Security's Grant Program for night vision units that will be used for and in support of the Police Department Special Operations Unit to provide funding for the police department to purchase 10 night vision units with a total grant value of $15,272.9. And clearly, our police admin group has been very busy with grant programs. So I applaud what they've been doing, going after those grants, and they've done a fantastic job. So. Mayor members of council, oh, member, councilmember Cook.
Yes, Paul, you know, we're applying for the grant. So that means, or do we have the grants already?
Some of those that we just mentioned, we have those. The others are, you're authorizing our application for those grants.
The ones, we want to have already, which ones we have already and when, and when will they go in the?
Once they're approved.
Once they're approved, okay. And particularly, you talked about the, the robot. I was kind of curious to hear about the robot. Is that, is that one approved or not? We're asking, just asking.
That for the, let's see, I'm trying to find that for the robotic grant.
Yeah.
Remind me on that, Chief Brown, or?
Yes, sir. It is.
Yeah, that's well, okay, on that, on that.
We have, you're saying yes?
Yeah. We, we've been fairly successful for each of these grants, Mayor Pro Tem. So that's been, again, kudos to the police department and how write the grants because there is a art to that and looking for the funding opportunities. So they've done a fantastic job.
And I would agree, kudos to the grant writer and the, and the officers writing those. That's probably saved us for how much, I didn't add them all up, but that probably saved us what overall with these grants, which are citizens. So you happen to know that total amount for the grants altogether?
It's a rough calculation. It's right at $100,000 for grants.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thanks for bailing me out, Mayor. I've, you put me on the spot to add up all these.
Yeah, I want, I want to echo Mr. Frederickson and Mayor Pro Tem Cooks in terms of giving a very, very strong thanks and commendations to our police department and the individuals involved in the securing of these grants. It's not an easy thing. There, there's a lot of paperwork involved, a lot of time and, and making sure that all the Ts are crossed and all the Is are dotted. And it's, it's not an, it's not an easy process. So very strong kudos and thanks to our police department and for going forward with these grants because that's aggression. It means we don't sit back and take business for granted where there's a grant available, we go after it. So thanks very much.
And Chief, you could put that, you could put, when we, when you actually get the robotic, put on a cocker heel for those speeders so we can get those as well, but I know that's extra, but thank you.
Mayor, that concludes the items for consent.
Thank you. I'm just thinking about Mr. Cooks and use of the robot. It's usually for bomb detection, Mr. Cooks.
I know, but the way they drive and they're going to set off a bomb in a few seconds.
All right. All right, moving on to item number two, briefing some presentations. We have a presentation on CARES Act funding from 2020, given to us by our Assistant Finance Director, Tia Pettis. Ms. Pettis, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am, of course, presenting the CARES Act Funding Update for 2020. Next slide. So we have come one full year from when the US declared the outbreak of the coronavirus a national public emergency. So that same month of March of 2020, the US passed the Coronavirus Aid and Relief and Economic Security Act, the CARES Act. Then in April 2020, Texas received over $11 billion in CARES Act funding. 3.2 billion went to jurisdictions with populations greater than 500,000. That included the city of Dallas as well as Dallas County. And Dallas County received about 240 million. And then also, we had 1.85 billion allocated for smaller jurisdictions. So this is the bucket that the city fell in. In May 2020, 72.5 million went to Dallas County to pass through to the cities within the county. And it was allocated to each city based on $55 per capita. In June 2020, this council, the city council approved the interlocal agreement with Dallas County to receive up to 2.173 million. Next slide, please. So of course, with any federal award, there are, there's criteria for what's eligible. And the US Treasury provided us the Coronavirus Relief Fund, CRF Guidance. And so CARES funding was allowed to cover costs that, one, were necessary for the public health emergency and, two, were not accounted for in the most recent budget. So for Duncanville, that was our FY 20 adopted budget. And three, were incurred during the period between March 1st, 2020 and ended through December 31st, 2020. And so I do want to note here, the CRF guidance was updated several times throughout the year. And so the original dates are listed here through December 31st, 2020. But in December 2020, the US Treasury actually extended that period to December 2021, so an extra year. Of course, the city continued on to spend as if it was going to end at the end of December 2020. And all of our expenses were incurred by November 30th, 2020. So our final report was submitted to the county December 15th, 2020. Next slide, please. So first, we're going to take a little bit of a look at Dallas County Assistance Programs. Initially, the city did research and spoke with council about utilizing our CARES funding for residential and business assistance programs. Of course, we were up against a short timeline, going by that initial date on the CRF of December 2020. And also discussed, council brought up good points as far as extensive tracking, the follow-up and documentation that might be required for these types of programs. So there were some concerns that we, if we had the resources for the audit requirements for these types of programs. So it was established that it would be most efficient for the city to utilize Dallas County Assistance Programs that were already in place. So with that, the city advertised through signs, the website flyers, the county's assistance programs. And so we advertised that to our Duncanville residents for assistance. Next slide. The county did allocate $35 million to an emergency business assistance program in May 2020. That's the EBAP program. So in July 2020, the Duncanville City Council did approve to allocate 1.47 million towards the county's EBAP program specifically for Duncanville businesses. So part of the program was the city's, the county's funds would pay out first, so that 35 million, and then they would go to the city's funds. After three rounds of accepting applications, with the last round happening in August, the county's funding was not exhausted so that they didn't, they were not able to get through that 35 million. And with that, on September 4th, 2020, the county released the 1.47 million back to the city to use on other eligible cost. Next slide, please. So here's just a overall recap of the Dallas County EBAP, the business program results. Back in September, we did provide the council this gray table. These were initial figures that were provided on businesses who were pre-eligible, but they were still in the application process. So that second column is just a reference point. Our population is 3% of Dallas County if we exclude the city of Dallas. We had a total number of applicants that was 6.8% of the total. And our number of applicants funded or in process at the time was 77. And that total amount that was going to go to Duncanville residents initially was 2.2 million, so 8.1% of the total. Now, moving forward to February 2021, in the green table below, these are the updated figures of the actual amounts that were funded. And of course, these numbers are much lower than we initially expected. And I did reach out to the county and they said this was primarily due just to many applicants becoming non-responsive after the initial application process. So if you go over to the fourth column in the green, Duncanville, there were actually 22 businesses that were funded, so that was 4.4% of the total. And the total dollar amount funded was 322,000, so 3.8% of the total. So while the numbers did decrease overall, Duncanville still did get their, their piece of the pie. Next slide, please. Dallas County also had an assistance program for residents, the Emergency Housing Assistance Program, EHPAP. And that was for rent and mortgage and utilities up to $1,500 per month for up to six months. So the county has funded to date 710 residents at a total of $2 million. And Duncanville residents were awarded $83,000 for rental assistance and $149 for utility assistance. So the good news about EHPAP is that this program is still running currently. The county has also offered now the Texas Eviction Diversion Program. So these are still available for assistance through the Dallas County website. Next slide. Now focusing on Duncanville's CARES Act funding, the city did receive the full amount available to us, that 2.173 million. 434,000 of that was received in July 2020. They provided us 20% upfront, and although it was provided upfront, it still required the extensive documentation and reporting and verification that all the expenses were eligible by the county. The 1.7 million in green was additional funding that we had to actually go through a proposal process with the county for them to approve the, the cost prior to us expending. And so that was approved October 2020, and we received that funding November 20. Required documentation and reporting was also required for this funding. So all funding was expended by November 30th. All expenses had been incurred, incurred by November 30th. Next slide. This might look like a familiar chart we, we've provided before to the council. Just an overall overview of the cost by category. In the blue, improved telework capabilities was about 43% of that funding. Expenses for general public health down in the orange was 15%. The gray area is public safety employee payroll, 31%. And other payroll-related cost was about 11%. So the next few slides will get into a little bit more detail on each category. Next slide, please. Moving telework capabilities for 929,000. This included our virtual meetings platform, so Zoom and, and all the others. Also, we had some conference room updates, upgrades to allow for hybrid meetings. And also, the next few items listed here came to council for approval back in October. So you may be familiar already with these items. So you may be familiar already with these items, but the cloud phone system, virtual desktop solution, laptops to replace all desktops for employees throughout the city, police sealed tough books to allow for easy ease of sanitation, outdoor digital signage and library hotspots. And also pictured there to the right are our library carols that were installed to support distance learning for the community. Next slide. Public health and compliance category, we spent 336,000 overall. This included the personal protective equipment, our masks, gloves, also backpack handheld sanitation sprayers and decontamination foggers, air purifiers, desk shields and sneeze guards to protect both our citizens and our employees. So those are at all customer service locations and destinations. Our bulk collection site at the service center, this was eligible under CARES. Do, this is the time when Republic was not able to do bulk pickup for our residents. So we were able to create a, a drop-off site at the service center. And also thermal temperature scanners throughout all city facilities. Next slide. We also, under the public health and compliance category, purchased a power washer for cleaning outdoor parks, facilities and restrooms. And also pictured here is the Fieldhouse Safe Pass Disinfectant Station, which I believe at the last council meeting, the Fieldhouse gave a, a briefing on that. So this was also purchased with CARES Act Funding. Next slide. Other payroll-related category was 231,000. This included COVID emergency leave. So in March 2020, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act provided up to an additional 80 hours of emergency leave for employees. So this is over and above the normal sick time for anything COVID-related. If they actually got COVID or were quarantined for exposure to COVID. So state and local governments were not eligible to be reimbursed through this program, but we were able to recover those costs through CARES Funding. Also COVID-related unemployment cost, 50% of that we were able to capture through our CARES Funding. And the other 50% was actually refunded to us through Texas Work, Workforce Commission. Next slide. Public safety payroll, 675,000. This included police security at the Ellis Davis COVID Testing Center. Our emergency medical services actually had a COVID squad with equipment and personnel dedicated to COVID, possible COVID transports. Our public safety payroll, so this included police, fire, EMS. So of course, in those categories, in those areas for those employees, there was quite a bit of overtime, backfilling of positions due to staff being out with COVID or those who were quarantined. So as I mentioned before, that, that CRF Guidance continued to evolve throughout the year. It started out very broad. And it seemed monthly, we, we received updates or clarifications or FAQs on eligible expenditures. So it was updated in September 2020 to allow for public safety payroll costs. And so although those costs are already budgeted, costs could be recovered through CARES if it was substantially different from the expected or budgeted use. And so all public safety payroll, as far as the CRF Guidance provided, was deemed substantially dedicated to the COVID-19 response. So that in turn made it substantially different from what we originally budgeted for. So we were able to recoup the remainder of the CARES Funding that was available to us. It was recovered under this category, under public safety payroll. Next slide. So I think we went back. There we go. Final slide here is accounting and audit. So the council, of course, throughout this process, as we met several times, were very diligent on asking questions on and concerns with the audit process for CARES Funding. So for accounting, we actually activated a separate emergency fund for tracking expenses within our financial software. We also ensured proper forms and procedures were communicated to staff in documenting, documenting payroll time and purchases. We participated in the weekly calls with the Dallas County CARES Team to ensure we were in compliance with CRF Guidance and the interlocal agreement. And we also submitted our monthly reporting and documentation to Dallas County as required. We were subject to a single audit this year. Anything, any federal award expense greater than 750,000 would put us in this category to have a single audit. And CARES Funding did that for us in FY20. So the FY20 CARES Funding has already been reviewed by our external audit firm, McConnell &amp; Jones. We met with Audit Committee last week and were pleased to be able to share with them that there were no comments or findings on our CARES, CARES Funding eligible cost. So that was a great, great thing. And just to note that also, we will have single audit again, will be required for FY21. And that's just based on the fact that, of, of the timing of how the funding happened across two fiscal years. And again, we expect the same, no, no comments or findings, because we followed all the same procedures as we did for the FY20 expenditures. Next slide. And with that, that concludes my presentation on CARES Funding.
Council members, I want to express to you an understanding of what you've just heard. You may understand it, but I feel it needs to be underscored. The exceptional articulation of what has happened with the receipt and in dispersment of these funds as articulated by Ms. Pettison is exceptional. What we don't realize is council, the numerous number of hours having to be spent to document our income or the receipt of those revenues and the use of those revenues in order to comply with federal and county requirements. So the time spent by our accounting staff, and in particular, I know that Tia Pettis was, was the lead on this in terms of communicating back and forth with county to make sure that we needed every, that we had everything was necessary in order to get all this approved. Come away with the, the, the feeling, folks, that this one bullet here on chart night, on chart 15, that when we were audited, there was no comments and no findings. And if you have any background in accounting experience, you understand that when an auditor comes away and has no comments and no findings through a formal audit, it is exceptional. It is beyond exceptional. It, it's almost unheard of. So such exceptional people that we have working in our, in our finance department. I just wanted to underscore that and thank Tia and, and Richard and all the staff for getting us through this. And it's not over, folks. This, this is not over. As she said, we're going to be audited again. And I know that I received several emails a day that were going to our finance department from the county and from federal sources in terms of the use of this money. And having to keep up with that is just, it was a tremendous burden on our folks. The untold hours being spent above and beyond the eight hours a day. Don't even think of an eight-hour day. It wasn't one. The, the weeks that they had to be spent doing this work. So I just want to communicate my personal thanks and I hope, on behalf of the entire city council, to our, to our staff in, in accounting and to our interim city manager, Mr. Pedrickson as well, for staying on top of this. Because, you know, all you have to do is misuse federal funds and you're in some deep trouble. And we are not. We are, we're in wonderful shape and condition as a use of those federal funds. And this is very, very important to us. So I wanted to, to make that expression as a public expression of our thanks and our faith in what's going on in our finance department. I saw that Mr. Mayor Protem Cooks, you had to hand up and also Councilmember at Large Harvey. So Mr. Cooks and Mr. Harvey, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Tia, I want to thank you. And I won't go back with the mayor just said, but I will echo how much we appreciate you as well as all the staff that, that went through this force. Excellent job. Really appreciate it. And to all the hard work you put into it. Hey, I know some things, let me just talk about a couple of things really quick. And that is, I also would like to appreciate the things that you made the purchase for, purchase for, such as the thing that the Field House, we know the Field House is a very active location. And for us putting the device in, the Safe Pass in for the, for the, for the station, it was great. I appreciate that. That was great. And then the library, the telework capability was good as well. I just have one question and it has, I know this is not under your control, but I'm just curious to know on the, on the, on my end. And that is, when you got to the businesses that was asking, we started out with 77 applicants funded and processed. And we ended with 22. Was there any indication for our learning for later on why it was such a dropout when it came to the end? Did they get funded elsewhere or, or what? Do you know, if you may, may not know, I just thought if you did know, you could share for our education for the, for the future.
I'm sure. As indicated that with the county, they said applicants became non-responsive. And while I don't know the specifics of the county program, the city did internally have its own through the EDC prior to receiving CARES Funding, provided COVID grants through the EDC. And in just talking with the staff and, and working with the staff on trying to get these, these grants funded out to the business participants, there was quite a bit of applicants who at one point did not want to provide additional information. Who, there was a lot of follow-up from our staff. Our staff worked very hard in contacting and re-contacting and, and reaching out to those who had not fulfilled the requirements. And so initially for that EDC funding, it was $250,000 available on the table. And in the end, we only funded out about 215,000, I believe. So it was a little bit of the same process I feel that probably happened with the county. Just a little bit of what we experienced internally with the city's program.
Okay, thank you. Do you know if the EDC and the chamber partnered with this at all together to reach out for those business owners?
That I'm not aware of. I'm, I'm just aware of the ED staff in on that.
Right. Thank you again. Thank you. And again, staff, for doing a great job with this, especially on the audit piece. Thank you. That could be my question, my comment.
Mr. Harvey, please.
Thank you, Mayor. To help you, Mayor Protem Cooks, understand, let me give you a little insight and others as to what took place. Cities had to set up some traps, if you would, to run the potential recipients through in order to ensure that the documentation was there to justify providing the applicant the money. And my personal experience, I found there were a number of cases in which the businesses simply just did not have the records to provide as documentation to justify why they needed the money, which is remarkably different from us in that we have sufficient records, documentation, skilled people and internal controls such that we can stand and audit and not have any comments at all. So that's what happened in, in that particular case in my experience. And I'm just going to thank Tia for confirming an urban legend for me, because I did understand that the monies that were allocated were in two buckets, 20%, 80%, 20%, the city had more discretion and 80% was the spending had to be done hand in hand with the county protocols. So thank you, Tia, for your excellent presentation and for confirming that urban legend. Thanks.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Harvey. I, I'm very much aware of how I work, being in banking and plus working with the, working on a contract with PPP. So thank you for educating the rest of the council, but I'm very much, was very much aware of it. I just wanted to ask for that again from our audit committee, from our, from our audit folks. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for those inputs. And once again, our deepest thanks to our finance staff in total. Moving on to item number 2B, discuss appointments to board and commissions to fill existing vacancies on the zoning board of adjustment and the sign control board. Turning this over to our City Secretary, Kristen Downs. Ms. Downs, it's all yours.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Okay, during our regular board and commission appointment process, the zoning board and adjustment and sign control board had one vacancy each remaining. City council directed myself to continue to advertise for the board vacancies. We now have three applicants who would like to serve on either the sign control board or the zoning board of adjustment. Both boards have currently one position, one vacancy left to fill. And so I was just wanting direction from council on where y'all would like to go next with these three applicants and the vacancies.
Well, if there's no objection, this is an item on our items for individual approval. We have all been provided with the resumes or the questionnaires that these three individuals have submitted. And if anybody have any concerns that they would like to voice now, if not, when we move into council, this becomes an item to vote on to place these individuals on those boards. Yes, Ms. Jameson, I see your hand.
I just have a suggestion that we try to include as many different districts or areas instead of having more applicants out of one particular area.
Thank you for that input. Acknowledged. Thank you. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, we will conclude our work session, briefing session. Timestamp on that is 6:48. All right, we will now move into executive session. Reading your agenda, I will read what we're going to be discussing in executive session. Once I finish that, council, if you would close out of where we are today or at this moment, and you do have a link to go into executive session. Item number one will be city council should convene and to close executive session pursuant to section 551.074. Texas government to deliberate personnel matters concerning the appointment and employment evaluation duties of a public officer to wit municipal court judge and associate municipal court judges. Item number two, city council may convene and to close executive session under section 551.071, 551.074, to seek legal advice from the city attorney or to deliberate a personal matter concerning the hiring, assignment, duties and/or conduct interviews and/or contract of a city personnel employee to wit city manager. So at this time, if you would please log out of this session and log into executive session. A call to order, our city council meeting at 7:09. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Once again, this is the Duncanville City Council Meeting conducted by Zoom Video Conference. And we are convening into open session on our city council at 7:09. And we are doing so in accordance with an order of the Office of the Governor issued March 16th, 2020, is extended by the Office of the Governor, June 12th, that we may conduct the city council regular meeting by video conference at 7:00 PM, March 2nd, 2021, to advance public health goal, limiting face-to-face meetings, also called social distancing, an effort to slow the spread of the Corona COVID-19 pandemic. We do have some, some citizen comments that we will be listening to. One person does desire to speak and I have two comments that I will be reading. The audience is in listen mode and those that one, two individuals who read three individuals have registered. And I said we will call upon them when And I said, we will call upon them uh when we get to that point in our agenda. Uh as a reminder to each of our council members, uh as we go through our agenda, if you wish to speak. Please physically raise your hand in front of the camera so either I or Kristen can see you, or you can use the raise hand feature in the chat box or participants box. And when we get to taking votes, it will be a roll call vote by our city secretary as we have done in the past. So moving on, uh we'll now do the invocation and I have asked council member Jameson, council member Jameson, if you would please give the invocation.
Sure. Our dear heavenly father, we come before you with humble and grateful hearts for watching over us and caring for us during the snowstorm. Thank you for your promise of always being there for us and watching over us and caring for us. And as you reminded us that your eye is on the sparrow and that you're watching over us. Please forgive us for our sins and show us your will for our lives and for our city. Please lead us, guide us and direct us as we make decisions for the city. That we will do your will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Uh ladies and gentlemen, if you would please rise and independently say the pledges to the United States flag and the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee. One state, under God, one and indivisible. All right, uh we are now moving into item number one. On the uh agenda and the first item is the mayor's report. Uh the the first thing I want to do is welcome our new city manager, uh Rita Farrow Benavides. Uh to uh to the city of Duncanville. Uh she is not a stranger to the southwest Dallas county, as as we are well aware. And we know that she is stepping into the chair uh where it's, we have a very, very busy time going on and what we just went through as well. Uh but we are excited to have her on board with us. And I know that each of us are individually welcoming her uh to to our city. And it's just exciting to to be able to say that we now have a city manager because uh not that Paul did an extraordinary job. As officially entitled interim city manager. And I know that we have a great team on board between Paul and Aretha now. Uh second item, I would like to take probably more than my allotted uh three minutes in the city charter. To express my deep thanks and gratitude to our entire city staff for the perfect storm that we have just weathered. I call it the perfect storm because we went through, we're still going through COVID. Then we went through ice and all the effects of ice on our city and then the effects of ice on our city with our water issues. In where I had to issue an emergency declaration for the conservation of water going to stage three. Our water reserves were depleted down to thirty seven percent. And that's what required me to issue that exec that executive declaration, emergency declaration to going to stage three conservation. The five most important users of water in our city were identified in that order. And those five CEOs or business owners were contacted individually uh by David Dunn in our water department. He had to explain to them why this was necessary. And I also called each of them individually to express. Our regret in having to do this, but knowing that it's painful, it's painful because they lost revenue. Painful because they were not able to provide paychecks to their people. But less painful is that either we shut down these five businesses until we can recover. Our reserves in turn up for water or we lose water or then we have to go to a boil order. And if the boil order doesn't succeed, then we'd lose water to the entire city. So as a result of enacting that and the great understanding of those business and great credit to our entire citizenry. They stepped up, they conserve water. We we listed what they needed to do, you know, if if you don't have to take a shower, don't take a shower, don't run a dishwasher, don't run your, don't run your. Your uh your clothes washer. Uh and they did the job. Because as a result of issuing the emergency declaration on the twenty sixth. By that following month, that was a Friday, by that following Monday, our reserves had come up and recovered to where we could go to stage one. And we could rescind that and we allowed those five businesses to reopen at eight o'clock in the morning that following Monday. This is such a great credit to our entire city for our citizens doing what was necessary and understanding that the greater good had to be accomplished. And for our staff. Words are not adequate to express the thanks and gratitude that we have. They were working twenty four seven through the ice storm, through the water breaks, through the water shut offs, through the water repairs. Through taking care of our roads for spreading out uh sand, for watching out for our police department, our fire department. And our firefighters and and then we had a structure fire uh that fire Wednesday. And that structure fire depleted our water reserves to the extent that that's what put us in crisis mode for our water. So this, and I I regret having to take more time, but I really want to express publicly. The the thanks and the gratitude of our entire city council. To what our staff did working tirelessly throughout this this through this crisis mode. This was crisis, folks. Uh it is nothing that we could say we've ever had handled before. We we've never had to deal with temperatures like this. Uh we had our mandate, we had our facilities kicking in, we had generators kicking in and then the generator for running all on diesel. And because of ice, then it became that our delivery of diesel to in order to keep our generators running got in jeopardy. There were so many things happening that we had never had to encounter before, that it was an hour by hour crisis mode resolution. And it's a great credit to Paul's leadership and to the each of our directors and their staff all the way down, all the way down to individuals who stepped up. And I just can't say it enough. And that's why I said I'm sorry for taking more than my three minutes that were allotted in in giving these reports, but I just had to do that. Uh so that takes care of that. Uh one thing I do want to mention is a sidebar. Uh that the uh church that I go to is is in Oak Cliff. And uh on this coming Saturday from ten until noon, uh they are giving out free food and free water. Uh to anyone in any community that wishes to drop by and that's the lighthouse at fifty five twenty five West Illinois. So if any, you want to communicate that to any of your uh your individuals within your individual districts, please do so. So uh with that, I will close my mayor's report and move on to any council members' reports and uh Mr. McNabb, I see your hand. Yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I I do want to echo exactly what you did say. Uh I want to welcome our city manager. We're very happy that you're here. The city staff can't say enough from the top down, how well these people. Perform and do good for our city. Uh extraordinary job. And 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 more specifically, uh for Paul Frederickson, I want to thank him for his leadership through this time as. As well as interim city manager because he had to come on during COVID, had to do a budget. And then and then he had to end it with our winter storms. And and the last thing I'd like to say or acknowledge is uh Mr. Kreutzberg. And Mr. Kreutzberg has the uh softball stadium at Duncanville High School. Named after him and he got to throw out the uh a pitch. Mr. Kreutzberg's been in Duncanville over forty years, served our school district and really done a outstanding job. And and he's just a tribute to our community. So a shout out to Mr. Kreutzberg. And that's it for me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNabb. Um, Mr. Harvey.
Well, uh thank you, Mayor, uh for this opportunity to speak and and I I will say. Uh that uh you echoed all the things that I was thinking about very well. But I will say one thing publicly that I said to Paul privately. And that is, I told Paul, Paul, you remind me of my Timex watch. You took a licking and you kept on ticking, brother. So uh I appreciate that. I appreciate every employee's fighting spirit. Uh that led us back from the brink of catastrophe over these events that have occurred. So we salute you and we're thankful to partner with you on behalf of this community.
Uh Mr. Cooks, thank you, Mr. Harvey. Mr. Cooks, please.
Uh I I go, first of all, let me say hello to our citizens. Uh let me welcome again, like all others, our new city manager, uh Mr. Aretha Farrow Benavides. Thank you and welcome to the city of Duncanville, of course. And we're ready, uh as you know, to roll your sleeve up and get get good going. Oh, we're going to talk about Paul later as well. Is this, are we talking about Paul now?
Yeah, do it later.
Okay, good. Now, oh wait, because I got a lot of stuff for him anyway. But let me uh welcome city manager. We really appreciate the you being here. I want to also echo what the mayor has said and thanking staff, staff again. One hundred percent thank you very much from our citizens. I want to thank our citizens as well. Who went through the coldest and went through everything you've been going through. Thank you for hanging in there. Uh I know many of you called and there's not much that we could do or say. But I will be one to thank you for hanging in there as well. So thank you very much, all the citizens of Duncanville. Uh I had an opportunity to meet with Duncanville Outreach on my meet, connect and learn. So Duncanville Outreach Ministry, I hosted a meet, connect and learn with them on Saturday. And what a tremendous access they are to our to our city. Uh I was encouraged to know more about them, period. So instead of what I would normally tell us is to shop locally for Duncanville, I'll still say that. But now I also say, if you have a contribution that needs to go to a local nonprofit that helps Duncanville. We have a treasure in our city that we can call with Duncanville Outreach and provide uh food and water and clothing. To Duncanville Outreach. So I'm going to encourage our citizens to make a contribution to Duncanville Outreach. Look them up. Great organization. Uh I'm also challenged uh my colleagues even on the council, if you have a chance to drop off a case of water to them as well. They kind of restock uh what Duncanville Outreach have because when we're not going through this. Uh the outreach ministry is still helping our citizens in Duncanville. So I dropped off three cases and. And I'll be dropping out more water on a on a monthly, on a monthly or quarterly basis to them. And then last but not least, well, uh I know that Ms. Jameson may say this, but I want to recognize Women's History Month. And know that we have plenty of great treasures in our city of women who's made our city and our household uh really well. So thank you for this Women's History Month. Uh last but not least, I know that we just got an order from the governor that we will, Texas is now open up. Uh I'm not sure, I do know how I feel about that, but I will tell you that I will continue to wear my mask. Uh and actually, as of Friday, I will get my very first shot vaccine. And so I'm looking forward to doing that. And with even with the shot, I will continue wearing my my mask and I'm just asking our citizens to stay safe. Even as you think about that as well. So that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Cooks. Uh just one ad, I believe, I haven't read it yet. I've heard about the uh rescission of the mask mandate, but it doesn't go into effect until next Wednesday. So people shouldn't be taking off their masks and and wide opening until uh the governor uh edict it takes effect. Uh Ms. Jameson, I saw your hand up. Yes, please.
I think Mr. Bear Cruz was first.
Okay, thank you, man.
Cruz, if you wish to.
Oh, yes, sir.
She sees the far too. Thank you.
Appreciate that. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh again, I wanted to. Welcome in the new city manager and just let her know that we're tough as nails and ready to get to work. Uh also, um you know, just thank Paul and our department director for all they did. I remember uh receiving those phone calls. Uh at all times of the day and evening and always asked Paul if he needed anything. And he says, well, now I've got, I've got the best uh staff I could possibly have right now. So we always appreciate that. And then uh I volunteered to give uh councilman Cooks his COVID shot is uh I've given about five hundred so far and I'm getting pretty good. So uh. Anyway, that's my invitation to him. Thank you.
Well, he would definitely uh have the courage if you want. He might take a needle from you, Joe.
I'm going to debate. Yeah, I'm going to debate.
Uh councilmember Jameson, yes, please.
Um yes, I would also like to welcome our new city manager. Um and she is our first female city manager, so she can kick off the uh Women's Month. With her uh being here, her presence and. We'll have a lot more to say the rest of the month, but there were so much with all the things that have happened and gone on. Um to really have a a presentation tonight, but we do welcome her and tell her. Um as my two year old grandson says, we're stinkers and but you know, it's. We do have uh fun, so uh we invite you to uh have fun with us. And also uh to thank Paul for the things that he did. Uh I really appreciate the fact that he kept us updated all the time. And that if I had, you know, I did the best I could with citizens, if I had something I needed to ask him, he immediately called me back. And so was it left out there flapping, thinking, what am I supposed to say? And I appreciate that. So thank you. And I know how much fun you had, Paul.
Yes.
Hello? Hello?
Yes, yes.
Yes, he was so tired, he barely could uh answer the phone and you could hear it in his voice. But you did a great job and your response was good. Would, did your family enjoy getting you back?
Not sure yet. I'll ask. They may get rid of me.
Oh, no. Well, we appreciate it. You did a good job, you and your staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh any others? Let's see. Any other issue, any other comments to be made in council member reports? Okay, moving on to item one C, city manager's report. Now it's um. I, oh, councilmember Anderson, your just video just came up. Did you have something you wanted to say?
No, it's all been said.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Um so I think what we'll do in terms of city managers' report, uh we recognized uh Ms. Farrow Benavides. From the business side, I'm gonna go ahead and take Paul. Uh you want to take any business first and then we'll go ahead and take Ms. Benavides.
Well, I just want to just really say thank you, Mayor, members of council. You know, I I appreciate. Your comments and again, um I think it's been said, we we have an excellent staff. And and everybody stepped up uh that was asked to step up and I couldn't be prouder of, from the department heads on down. Um everyone carried their load, but I want to thank Mayor and members of council, you you guys were very supportive of me during that interim time. Uh and especially the the week of the storm. Uh obviously, were there things that I wish we could even do better? We're always going to be doing those things when it comes to after action. But your support and your assistance, as I talked to each of y'all, especially during that week, uh was tremendous. And I I again, I couldn't have done it without y'all's support as well. And again, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I was Benavides.
Well, I want to thank the mayor and each of you, city council members, for uh giving me the honor to serve the citizens of the city of Duncanville. I also want to thank Paul, the entire team. My transition into this process has been wonderful based on the stuff that they have provided me, based on their commitment to the community and their knowledge of their areas. And so uh we have a fabulous team here in the city of Duncanville and I want you to know. That uh during my time before coming, I've spent. And I want you to know that, uh, during my time before coming, I've spent time talking to Paul on the phone and he tell me, just soon as you get here, the better. In fact, we were both having our own storms at the same time, mine in Petersburg, his here. And, and I'd see in Paul's eyes that he was tired, but he kept pushing forward, as did the entire team. And so I just want to thank him and our team for all that they've done, uh, and all that they will continue to do. And I look forward to working with each of you.
Thank you very much. We are truly a blessed city and honored to have every member of our staff, from director level all the way down to every employee, did what they had to do. Let me, uh, back up and just make one other comment. There was a phone call that was initiated by Senator Royce West with mayors of Southwest Dallas County and with executives of ERCOT and Encore in the middle of the, the storm. And during that phone call, I was very vocal in my displeasure with the manner in which so-called rolling blackouts occurred, because they didn't occur. And as a result of that, I initiated a contact with the senior executive through Senator West to talk to him about what happened in our city or what didn't happen in our city in terms of the management of power as it rolled through our city. Uh, I got a phone call, uh, last Saturday morning from a senior executive at Encore. We had a very open and positive discussion. And closed with my requesting, uh, that we, as a council and respective staff, make a visit to Encore headquarters, which is here in Dallas, and see their operations and understand what it takes to initiate and manage a rolling blackout. And what they had to go through in terms of crisis management to avoid what Councilmember Harvey said is a catastrophe. And he was very open to that. And so, uh, what I committed to is after the dust settles and, and we get our feet back on the ground rolling well, sometime in, in April or May, that we make a visit, uh, to the Donkor headquarters, which they're very open to, and get a full explanation of how they operate and what, what went on during this, this very terrible time of, of power outages in our, in our state and our city. I just wanted to add that for your information. Okay, uh, item number two, uh, we do not have any proclamations or presentations. Moving on to item number three, citizens input. Pursuant to 551.007 of the Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address city council concerning any matter of public business or any posted agenda item. However, the act prohibits the city council from deliberating on issues not on the public agenda. And such non-agenda, agenda items may be referred to city staff for research and any future action. All persons addressing or subject to council adopted rules and limitations, and that limitation by our city charter is that individuals have two minutes to speak. And that timer will be operated by our city secretary, Ms. Kristen Downs. So I have three comments, uh, that have come forward and I'm reading them and the.
Mayor, before you read, are this with the video on and off, on or off, since we're in the, are we turning the video off at this point with the comments, public comments? Are we officially in campaign season or not?
Oh, uh, well, we're s- we are in campaign season, but campaigns aren't permitted to start until 60 days prior to the actual election. So we're actually outside that. Uh, Mr. Hager, I'm going to turn to you for an interpretation of that.
If, if, uh, I think it'd be appropriate that electioneering would not, at this point, be appropriate. If, uh, if someone's got comments, that's fine. Uh, if, if it, if they are made, we will record them. We will not play them back, uh, and they'll be archived.
Okay, um, I have.
I, I don't know that there's any way we can turn off the recording device and I would hate to do that and then miss an appropriate comment. It's a little bit more difficult for us to operate, but uh, I'll, uh, concede to, uh, either our ITech people or the city secretary to turn off the recording at this time. If they can. I, I just don't know if they can or not.
I think it would be difficult. What do you think, Tracy?
Um, I, I can actually pause the recording, uh, of the meeting. Uh, but it would, do you want me to also pause it on Facebook?
Absolutely. That's, that's part of the public presentation. Yes.
Okay, um, I can pause both of those. Give me just a moment here.
Hey, consider the minutes for the February 2nd city council regular meeting. 4B, consider a resolution authorizing the award of bid IFB 21-009 to Anderson Asphalt and Concrete Paving LLC for mill and overlay in an amount of $766,623.60. 4C, consider a resolution to enter into a joint election agreement and election services contract between Dallas County and other jurisdictions holding election on May 1st, 2021, to be administered by the Dallas County Elections Administrator in accordance with subchapter D of chapter 31 and chapter 2, 271 of the Elect, Texas Election Code. 4D, consider a resolution authorizing an amendment to an existing purchase agreement for a new annual purchase amount up to $125,000 with Olson Electric, Inc., for electrical installation, maintenance, repair services, and parts for various city departments. 4E, consider a resolution authorizing the first renewal option of IFB-19-005 janitorial services for Duncanville Fieldhouse and a contract increase in the amount of $24,000 for a new annual amount up to $93,500 with DNA Building Services, Inc. 4F, consider a resolution authorizing the receipt of a grant from the Texas Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division, BG 21 Rifle-Resistant Body Armor Grant Program, to provide funding for the police department to purchase nine sets of rifle-resistant body armor for police officers with a total grant value of $16,650. 4G, consider a resolution authorizing the receipt of a grant from the Texas Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division, BG 22 Rifle-Resistant Body Armor Grant Program, to provide funding for the police department to purchase 18 sets of rifle-resistant body armor for police officers with a total grant value of $33,300. 4H, consider a resolution authorizing the application acceptance for and receipt of a grant from the Texas Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division, Justice Assistant Grant Program, to provide funding for the police department to purchase one Robo Team Individual Robotic Intelligent System Long Range that will be used and in support of the Police Department Special Operations Unit with a total grant value of $39,000. 4I, consider a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the North Central Texas Council of Governments and FY20 Homeland Security Grant State Homeland Security Program for night vision units that will be used for and in support of the Police Department Special Operations Unit to provide funding for the police department to purchase 10 night vision units with a total grant value of $15,272.09.
Thank you, City Secretary. The chair will accept the motion to approve the consent items. Mr. Mac Burnett, I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Bear Cruz has seconded. City Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Vera Cruz, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Mac Burnett, for, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Anderson, for or against?
For.
Mayor Pro Tem Cooks, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Jameson, for or against?
For.
At-large Councilmember Harvey, for or against? For. Mayor Gordon, for or against?
For. Thank you, council. Unanimous approval of that motion to accept the consent items. Moving to item number five, items for individual consideration. Uh, ladies and gentlemen on council, if there's no objection, uh, going to move item 5C, uh, to, uh, the first item we'll consider for individual consideration. Is there any objection to my doing that?
No objection there.
All right. Thank you. Uh, moving, uh, item 5C to the first item under items for individual consideration. Item 5C, consider an ordinance providing for the appointment and contract for a presiding municipal court judge and associate municipal court judges for the municipal court of Duncanville and authorizing the mayor to sign. Uh, yeah, I will accept the motion to approve.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we reapprove the appointment, uh, I'm sorry, we reappoint, approve the reappointment of Judge Rizzo, Island and Austin.
I'll second.
Um, who was that? Ms.?
Cooks.
Mayor Pro Tem Cooks has seconded. Uh, thank you. We have a motion to approve and a second. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, city ca- um, city secretary, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Vera Cruz, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Mac Burnett, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Anderson, for or against?
For.
Mayor Pro Tem Cooks, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Jameson, for or against?
For.
At-large Councilmember Harvey, for or against?
For.
Mayor Gordon, for or against?
For, council. Thank you for that unanimous approval. And, and while we're doing that, uh, all three judges are present on this video conference. Uh, Judge Rizzo, Judge Island, Judge Austin, on behalf of the entire city council, we want to thank you for your service and the exceptional work that you do in the municipal court for the city of Duncanville. We are pleased, uh, to have you, to reappoint you for these renewals. It's, uh, such an honor to have you working with us in our city. Uh, do either, any of you, uh, three judges have any comments that you would like to make?
Your honor, this is, uh, John Rizzo. I just want to thank everybody. It is a great honor to be able to serve the city of Duncanville as a judge. We have a good group of people as judges. We have a great group of people, uh, in our staff headed over, uh, headed by Vicky, Vicky Delos Santos. So we've had a rough year with, as everybody has had, but we've gone from in-person proceedings to virtual proceedings. And, uh, and the staff and the other judges have been able to make it happen. But again, thank you all so much.
Thank you, Judge Rizzo. Uh, Judge Austin, I see, you want to speak. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank the council and Mr. Mayor for reappointing us. Uh, it's been a tough time, but we made it through the last year. We'll make it through this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, uh, Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, Anthony Island. Uh, I want to thank you and I want to also thank, uh, the city council members, uh, for the reappointment. And just to kind of piggyback on what, uh, Judges Rizzo and Austin have stated, it has been a true pleasure and an honor to work, uh, for the city of Duncanville. And I, you know, I, I hope and plan to, uh, continue my service with you all and, and to the, you know, to the best of my ability. And it has just been an amazing, uh, two years, uh, the last two years, anyway, working with the court staff over in Duncanville. So thank you all very much.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I guess, Mr. Hager.
Yeah, yeah, on behalf of the city attorney's office, I'd like to thank all three judges and their assistants and, uh, to my staff and as acting as prosecutor in the municipal court. Uh, we value the opinions of all three judges and work with them. And they've done a great job of helping me mentor, uh, new lawyers as they come to the firm and serve as prosecutor. And I appreciate everything that Judge Rizzo, Judge Austin and Judge Ewen have done for us as well. And I'd like to thank them publicly. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hager. Okay, uh, seeing no further comments, once again, uh, our thanks to all three honorable judges for their service. Taking item 5A under items for individual consideration, conduct a public hearing and consider an ordinance repeating and replacing the zoning ordinance and the zoning map. Um, at this time, uh, Mr., turn it over to Freezer Nichols, uh, before we have the public hearing, Mr. Daniel Harrison will take the lead. Mr. Harrison.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having us today. And what I will do is I will, uh, share my screen for the presentation.
Oh, and to interrupt, we also have Erica Craig Craft from Freezer Nichols with us also. Thank you. Go ahead.
One minute. Can everyone see the slideshow?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Great. Well, thank you. Uh, we're gonna go through real quickly, uh, just the presentation here. There's, uh, four parts to the presentation. I'd like to talk you through the process that we went through. Um, really, the project's been divided into three phases and the project is to update, uh, the zoning ordinance. And we started with the first phase, uh, back in 2019, and that was to do the diagnostic evaluation. And with that, we started off with stakeholder interviews. So we sat down with, uh, city staff. We, we went through the different departments. We, uh, sat, uh, at the conference table and, and walked through, uh, topics and issues. Uh, we talked to elected and appointed officials, uh, downtown property owners, and also the development community. We had people come in, uh, for the interviews to provide, uh, to provide their input. We also had, uh, a community open house and, uh, over at the senior center. Uh, when we, uh, were able to, to talk and to present ideas and to hear feedback. Also, you'll see a picture here of people writing down their comments on boards. And once again, this part of the process, phase one, was really gathering input in what were, uh, important issues to individuals. Uh, we also had a online component. And so this was the survey that we had where we were able to, uh, ask people what their priorities were, uh, development style preferences. So once again, this was another resource that we were able to use to identify issues and, uh, proposed solutions. The first phase culminated in a diagnostic report, uh, where we identified, uh, issues and proposed recommendations. Uh, and that is really the game plan moving forward, uh, that we use to update the document. Uh, and so we identified 32 zoning-related items. We, we addressed this at a, at a workshop. Uh, and then we moved forward into phase two. Phase two was the drafting of the, of the new zoning ordinance. Uh, and we had meetings with staff, uh, to go through that. Uh, also, the planning and zoning commission was critical in developing that. And then meeting with the council as we developed, uh, the draft. Uh, once we had a draft for feedback and, uh, review, uh, we entered into the third phase of the project. And that was the refinement of the document and, uh, where we are now in the adoption process. Uh, so through this phase, uh, we had five joint workshops with the council and P and Z to discuss the draft ordinance, uh, and the map. Uh, so those were critical in helping us get through, uh, um, key items. Then we had a four-week virtual open house to receive public input where we, uh, had a online, uh, meeting and then had that available for four weeks and had a, another online component where people can provide us input. And then last month, we had a public hearing at the P and Z, uh, where we had, uh, comments and the, the, the two comments that we had were, uh, one was requesting some, uh, some, uh, how to address, uh, solar panels or having some language to specifically address solar panels. And then, uh, the other comment was really a comment of support, uh, for the, for the process. Uh, so just for, for, uh, those in the crowd who, uh, as, as we start the, the public hearing for a little introduction into zoning and what zoning is for the city. Um, the state has enabled cities across Texas to, uh, have zoning. And so they, the state provides us the ability to zone. And when we talk about what, what is zoning, I want you to think of the city, uh, and really we have areas or zones in the city where we describe what the permitted, uh, lane use types are. Uh, is that area for residential purposes, commercial purposes? Maybe it's a mixture of the two. Uh, also zoning is our site development standards and also our procedures. How do we, how do we change zoning? Uh, so that is, that is sort of a quick overview of the elements of zoning. Uh, zoning is also the implementation of the comprehensive plan, which was adopted in 2017. So the comprehensive plan is really our vision document showing us, you know, where we want to go. And then the zoning regulations is a way to achieve, uh, that vision. So I want you to think of the zoning ordinance as a way to implement the, uh, Destination Duncanville Comprehensive Plan. And then I wanted to highlight some proposed, uh, some of the proposed zoning highlights. And we'll look into, here's just a screenshot of the table of contents. So you can see the different sections that we have in there. Uh, really, we have a section that addresses, uh, sort of all our, uh, this is compliance required. How do we handle our? this is compliance required. How do we handle our zoning map? Uh, how do we, uh, you know, address penalties and fees? Uh, so that's just a general provision section. Uh, then we get into more of the, what people would consider the meat of the zoning ordinance, where we establish the zoning districts. The, we have residential zoning districts. We have non-residential zoning districts. We have special zoning districts. Uh, and then once we have the zoning districts, we look at lane uses. And what, when we talk about lane uses, I want everyone to think about just what is the lane used for? Is this, this a single family home? Is this a, is this an apartment complex? Is this a restaurant or a hotel? So we look at lane uses. And then we move into the neck, next, uh, zoning element, which is the development standard. So, uh, the development standards apply to the uses. So we talk about, uh, what is the parking requirement for a business or the lighting requirement? Uh, we have different standards in there, uh, for, uh, dimensional standards, about lot sizes, things of that nature. Uh, we also have a section for the downtown Duncanville district standards, because that's a, that's a special district. Uh, and then so after we talk about setting up the development standards, we look at the development review bodies. What is the council responsible for? Of course, approving zoning changes, uh, planning and zoning commission, whether they responsible for key element and recommending, uh, uh, action to the council. And then, of course, we have the zoning board of adjustment and also the city planner. So what, what their roles and responsibilities are, all are. We move on to the next section, which is zoning procedures. So when we talk about, uh, you'll hear us talk about specific use permits. Uh, what's the process for that? Plan development permits. Uh, if someone's trying to do something different than what the, uh, ordinance calls for, we have provisions for that. Those are called variances or special exceptions. And so, uh, article six really addresses all our procedural requirements. And then at the end of the document, we have a definition section, which, uh, all our key terms are identified. So, uh, we'll talk about the use chart and we have all the uses listed. We have definitions. So, so, uh, all those things are clearly defined. Other highlights, uh, we, uh, here on this slide, you could see, uh, we have the existing zoning districts listed on the left side and the proposed district, uh, districts listed on the right side. Uh, we had some opportunities to consolidate districts. Uh, so we go actually from twenty-five districts down to fifteen. Uh, so there's some opportunities to consolidate, uh, some of those to, to really help streamline the process. And so we're looking at the residential districts that we see on the screen. Uh, same concept for the non-residential district. We're able to focus on for our non-residential districts, the scale rather than, than the use as much, uh, to really show, uh, is this really a neighborhood, uh, office and retail type of use versus a, a, a more general type? Uh, and then for our commercial and industrial, once again, we were able to combine those to help with some, some streamlining there. Uh, our special districts, uh, we have, of course, our PD district. The mixed-use district really rolls into the, uh, local office and retail district. It's, it's treated as a use in that district. So that's the way that, uh, that's addressed. And then we have our downtown Duncanville district. So those were the proposed and the existing districts. This slide shows the current zoning map and once again, the existing and proposed district. And once we take a look at some of the updates, uh, to the map, it's really just a, uh, color, a new color coding system on there. There's no direct, uh, changes right now, uh, in, into the map. So you can see we have a more standard, uh, uh, across, uh, cities across Texas and, and the country. There's a standard, uh, colorization, uh, for zoning maps that, that people looking up the zoning map would, would be familiar for. Uh, so this would be an opportunity to take a look at that and have it have a standard color there. And so that's what we're showing on, as far as the map goes. The permitted use chart, critical element of the zoning ordinance. Uh, you can see on the far left column, uh, we have all our uses listed and, and they're broken down by category. So we have residential uses all grouped together. We have, uh, retail and office uses grouped together. So we have different categories. But here on the screen, what we're showing, we're showing residential uses. And then across the top, you can see what districts those are allowed in. And then our chart will let us know whether it's permitted by rights or the business is just, uh, it's a single family home and a single family district. Yes, that's allowed to just go in and, and, and apply for a building permit. Or if we have one of these, uh, uh, circles, uh, that, that are not filled in, uh, that's requiring a SUP. We have additional regulations that we can easily show on this chart. So the parking requirements, uh, if we have special regulations for a, uh, use, uh, it's all hyperlink. So someone would be able to see what the, uh, standards are. So the goal of this document is to, to really increase the user friendly, uh, miss. And so it's easier for residents, businesses, uh, staff and also P and Z and council to review and administer.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I, I had a question. It was back about three or four slides. Uh, I don't think you saw, go back one more. Right here in, uh, no.
One more.
Come forward. You just took it off.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It, uh, here it is, this map. I never did get my question answered on what exactly? I don't know if you can see where my arrow is.
Oh, I, no ma'am.
Okay, let's see. On the right-hand side in the yellow, north of I twenty, it's a, there you go, right over here, no. There you go, right there, that box with the X's in it.
Mm-hmm.
What is that?
That.
I mean, I know where it is, but what are you calling it?
I think that is, uh, we, we can investigate that, but it should be an SUP. Uh, that I think is what that is, is calling for, because it's either calling out an SUP or a PD in there and.
We don't have, uh, you're saying PD?
Yes, a, a planned development zoning district may, may be.
Well, we don't have a planned development. And SUP doesn't go with the land. It went with an individual owner.
The.
And it was for sale. I don't know if it's sold or not, but you don't keep your SUP.
Ma'am, uh, this is, this is Greg. Uh, that was an SUP. Uh, that was, um, rescinded, um, several months ago and returned back to, uh, residential.
Residential.
Yes, ma'am. So we, we just need the map to reflect that change. So that's, yeah, we can, we can make that change to the map, Councilman Jameson.
And I thank you.
Good catch.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Harrison, continue.
Uh, we did talk about parking, uh, some of the highlights in there for, for single-family homes. Uh, the parking requirements, having two unenclosed spaces plus a one or two, uh, car garage or port de chaise. Uh, you could do a carport by SUP. And so when we say unenclosed spaces, that's just having a, uh, a, a driveway to, uh, have two, two cars being able to park on that plus either a one or two, two-car garage. Uh, duplexes would have two unenc- unenclosed spaces in there. And that was, uh, one of the things we wanted to highlight. Another element was short-term rentals. Uh, these are your, your Airbnbs, uh, they're allowed by right in, uh, downtown. And we have them as an SUP, uh, in most other districts. Uh, the owner must obtain a permit, uh, from the city, have no outstanding issues. Uh, there is the payment of the hotel occupancy, uh, tax, proof of insurance, make sure that, uh, the homes, homes insured. And then if there's a violation of, uh, one of these standards, the city reserves the right to, uh, remove the property, uh, from the registry. So that it would not be a use of the short-term, short-term rental.
Okay, uh, Mr. Harrison, I need to interject. Go back, please.
Yes.
Uh, there are two bills operating in the Texas State Legislature at this moment that I must bring to the attention of council and in fact, uh, to our city and city attorney and to, uh, Mr. Harrison and, and Mr. Craig Craft. Uh, these two bills HB one nine six zero and HB one nine six one, uh, by Representative Beckley have been, uh, been given consideration. And I'm going to read from the bills so that there is no misunderstanding in terms of what they say. Uh, in terms, uh, it says a short-term rental unit means a dwelling that is A, used or designed to be as the home of a person, family or household, including a single-family dwelling or unit in a multi-unit building, including an apartment, condominium, cooperative or timeshare. And B, rented wholly or partly for a fee and for a period of less than thirty consecutive days. Two, the bill does not require a city to regulate a short-term rental unit, but does require a city that elects to regulate the unit to comply with the bill. Here's what's important. Item three, except as provided by the bill, a city may not, A, adopt or enforce an ordinance rule or other measure that I, one, prohibits or, or limits the use of property as a short-term rental unit. Or two, is applicable solely to short-term rental units or short-term rental unit providers, short-term rental unit tenants or other persons associated with short-term rental units. Or B, apply a municipal law, including a noise restriction, parking requirement or building code requirement or other law to short-term rental units or short-term rental unit providers, short-term rental unit tenants or other persons associated with short-term rental units in a manner that is more restrictive or otherwise inconsistent with the application of the law to other similarly situated property persons. HB nineteen sixty and HB nineteen sixty-one are virtually the same. They are on record and folks, if this, if this is passed, what you're looking at on this chart goes away. Uh, that's all I have to say. This is just a heads up. We don't know whether this is going to make it through committee. We don't know whether it's going to make it to the floor. But these bills are now in process in the eighty-seventh legislature in the state of Texas. Uh, so.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I've, I've talked to, uh, our state rep, Yvonne Davis, in her office and told them the way that we felt. So hopefully we will get some pushback.
What's necessary is that as we individual council members here also, as elected officials, if we wish to express our feelings about these two bills, it's necessary that you do so. And by making that phone call, it's very, very important. And maybe follow up with an email to that phone call would be, uh, would carry even more weight. But this is what's on the horizon, folks. I wanted to bring it to your attention. And thank you for that, Councilmember Jameson. Mr. Harrison.
Thank you. Thank you. And, and we can consider whether, whether leaving it in or whether you would like to take that, make a revision to it and, and we can take it out. And I, I know it's sort of a rock and hard place. We don't know exactly how everything will, will turn out at the end of the, uh, legislature. Uh, so, but those are both definitely, definitely the options that, that we have in there.
Well, I, I would suggest in response to that comment, Mr. Harrison, you don't do anything with it. That's where we stand right now as a city and until ordinance or law mandates something differently, that's, this is part of our record. Uh, Mr. Hager, I saw your hand up.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I would recommend that we go ahead and, and pass this ordinance. Uh, one, to reiterate what you have just said, uh, that will be the, the requirements up until the legislature tells us otherwise. And there may be an opportunity to grandfather some of these regulations if we move forward. I know that TML is opposing, uh, HB one sixty and one sixty-one as well as a number of other municipalities and their, uh, governmental relations. People in Austin have opposed this as well. So, uh, hopefully it won't make it out of committee and I would recommend that we go ahead and pass this. And, uh, if we need to come back and clean it up later, we will. But I think having something on the books is important.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Mr. Harrison, you may move on, please. Thank you.
Uh, accessory buildings was the next item. Um, when we're talking about accessory buildings, uh, there's no permit required if it's smaller than a hundred and twenty square feet and thirteen feet in height. Um, we have some standards for accessory buildings not being, uh, placed in easements. Uh, we do have an exemption for an accessory building associated with agricultural, uh, uses. Uh, the, the key element here is, is we have a chart, uh, that focuses on, it, it, it's sort of a graduated scale for our smaller lots, which we would say were, uh, uh, ten thousand square feet or less. Uh, you can have less, uh, area dedicated, uh, to accessory buildings. That, that's four hundred square feet in this example. Once we get to a more medium-sized lot between ten thousand, twenty thousand square feet, that, that increases in size. So, so when we're in our denser areas, uh, yes, there's, there's a little bit more restriction to it than once we get into our more open areas, then, then those, those numbers increase. And so this is really what this chart is, is showing. And so this is how we're treating, uh, accessory buildings. But that's the general concept, uh, that we have for accessory. More land that you have, the, the more flexibility. Uh, we talk about sundry stores and these are your, your, your dollar stores, uh, having a separation, uh, requirement. So, so they're not all clustered, uh, in one area and also having a, uh, ten percent of the minimum floor area to be dedicated to, uh, fresh produce, meat, dairy products. And this is, this is through a, uh, SUP process is the way that this is administered. Uh, outside commercial storage and screening, uh, screening is required for, for all outside storage. So, uh, it includes cars stored for more than twenty-four hours that are not for sale. Uh, having a solid six-foot, uh, screen wall or fence, uh, and, oh, or it could be a landscaping element sort of in the, uh, illustrations that we show here. Uh, in the industrial district, you can have a more open fence in there since we're in an industrial area. And so that's, uh, one of the things that we wanted to highlight was the commercial, uh, storage screen for, uh, new businesses. Uh, we also talked about non-residential and multifamily, uh, design. Uh, so here in, you see a picture of a, uh, a building. Uh, we talked about building articulation. And so there's some changes into the facade height and also to the depth of that facade. So, uh, it's just not going to be a box. It would be a more articulated, uh, building. So we do have some standards for, for that for non-residential and our multifamily. Uh, along the lines with multifamily design, uh, we do have some requirements for, um, once we get into our multifamily units, provide for other recreational areas such as, you know, whether it's a child play areas or adult recreation, dog parks, picnic areas, making sure that those are incorporated in new multifamily, uh, developments. And so, so tho- those are the highlights. Uh, the next steps moving on, on from today, of course, it's, it's a public hearing and the consideration for adoption is, is really where we are tonight. So, so, so to the end of the process, as you will see here on the, on the, on the schedule. Uh, and with that, I'll, I'll turn it back over for, uh, any questions, uh, that someone may, may, may have.
Okay, I think, uh, what we need to do at this point is to open up the, the public hearing. And then after we close the public hearing, open it up for city council member, uh, discussion. Uh, so, uh, now I will take a motion. Uh, I'm sorry, just, we're going to open the public hearing. I don't need a motion to do that. We can open the public hearing at eight twelve. City Secretary, do we have any individuals wishing to speak in the public hearing?
Um, what, does anybody wish to speak? Could you please raise your hand? Use, uh, let's see, use press star nine if you're on your phone and then raise your hand on the Zoom options if you would like to speak. Looks like we have no hands raised.
Thank you very much. The chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion to close by Pro Tem, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Cooks and the second by Councilmember McNabb. City Secretary, please take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Vera Cruz for or against?
For.
Councilmember McNabb for or against?
For.
Councilmember Anderson for or against?
For.
Mayor Pro Tem Cooks for or against?
For.
Councilmember Jameson for or against?
For.
At large councilmember Harvey for or against?
For.
Mayor Gordon for or against?
For the motion to close the public hearing is unanimously approved at eight thirteen. All right, at this time, I will open it up for city council member, uh, comments or discussion and staff members as well. Any, uh, comments?
Mayor, this, Don.
Yes, sir.
I want, I want to thank Daniel and Erica for their time, because this has really gone on longer, uh, with COVID and everything else that's been, uh, in, in effect. And I really appreciate what Freezer Nichols and presented. And I just go ahead and like to make a motion to approve it.
Thank you very much. We do have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Uh, Councilmember Vera Cruz, I see your second. Thank you very much. Uh, before taking that vote, there's some, I would like to say, uh, that, uh, behind the scenes, we've had a lot of people working on this, uh, in staff. Uh, one of the individuals to recognize is interim city planner Andrew Ruick. One of the individuals to recognize is interim city planner Andrew Ruick. I know Andrew is is uh logged on and uh, you know, Jackie Colton and and of course Greg Ramey and and the staff and Athena is this, the document that I recall when we first put our hands on this thing was what? Well over a hundred and eight pages or something like that. And as as uh Councilmember Mac Burnett said, we have been thrashing through this, but doing a good job. Doing a good, yeah, there it is. He's showing the document. Uh, for me personally, it was a fire hosed education. I had not been exposed to any of this information before, but uh now I'm dangerous. I have a little bit of education based on uh what Daniel and Erica have been be able to provide and and our staff in our in our public works and along with city manager. Uh, so thank you very much for for all this hard work. And it is just going to take us sustainability for our city in terms of what we look like, how we build, and we're going to be doing for the future. Uh, so with that, uh, City Secretary, please take a vote.
Uh, Mr. Hager has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hager.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I I want to publicly thank uh Andrew and and Daniel and Erica. We were trying to get this finalized document and meet your deadline. And then uh we had a deep freeze. And so I I want to at least public apology to to them. And they did a great job of getting this final document together so you could do this tonight. And I certainly appreciated a city attorney. And this is by far the best zoning ordinance I've ever seen a city adopt. And I've worked for a lot of cities and this is user friendly. It's got great graphics in it. It's easy to use. It's easy to read. Uh, our citizens will understand it and what the expectations are. And this is a really fine document, and I want to thank F and FN and I for a great job. And of course, it took us many, many meetings on this Zoom uh panel that we have tonight to go through this thing time and time again. And I and I certainly appreciate the things that you've done. It makes my job a lot easier. So, thank you.
As well, we need to thank our Planning and Zoning Commission and all the commissioners because they reviewed all this and they've been through it before it's coming to us. Uh, this so so many people put in uh a lot of work on this thing. Uh, so uh, Mr. Hager, your apology is accepted. We accept your apology for being late and missing the deadline. That's okay. All right. So City Secretary, you ready for a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Vera Cruz for or against?
For.
Councilmember Mac Burnett for or against?
For.
Councilmember Anderson for or against?
For.
Mayor Pro Tem Cooks for or against?
For.
Councilmember Jameson for or against?
For.
At large, Councilmember Harvey for or against?
For.
Mayor Gordon for or against?
For. Thank you very much. City Council unanimously approving this motion.
Mayor, if if I could, one one more thing before we leave this. If if Ms. Craig Craft and Mr. Uh, Daniel, if they will be so kind as to remove the draft now and to make that small change in the map, we'll get this attached to the ordinance that's uh be presented for you to sign and we will move forward. Thanks again.
Wait a minute, you said remove the draft? I thought we were going to leave it in and see what happened.
I think you're saying the draft watermark that's it's on the paper.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Don't remove the other one.
No. Okay, thank you very much for that input, Mr. Hager. Okay, moving on to item B. Consider an ordinance amending section nineteen dash one zero seven of the City of Dunkville ordinance to declare a portion of Oriole Boulevard as a no parking zone. Uh, this is over. Uh, this is for Mr. Greg Ramey, our Director of Public Works. Mr. Ramey.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, this is uh to talk about the parking along Oriole Boulevard. Um, with me is also um or helping me put together this slideshow was uh Chief Brown from the Police Department. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so for the background, uh, back in uh January, uh, Chief Brown uh did a briefing to council about Oriole Boulevard uh at the request of Councilmember Jameson. Uh, that was uh due to complaints from residents of the Deer Chase condominiums about parking and speeding along Oriole. Uh, this particular road at this location is six lanes wide and only council can regulate parking on roads over thirty feet wide. Um, and at the uh January uh briefing session, uh, staff was um directed to prepare an amendment to the no park parking ordinance regarding prohibiting parking on the west side, uh, which brings us here tonight, which is uh the presentation to you for your consideration on that uh ordinance amendment. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so just some um, we'll have some background slides. So this is an aerial view of the condominium complex. You'll see uh the buildings off to the uh left or the west side of Oriole. That is uh Deer Chase condos. Um, which in what you see on the east side is uh one house uh there in the south. And then just north of that house along uh the west side is um commercial. It goes extends commercial um all the way up to Camp Wisdom. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so we we also did a um report on accidents um from last year. And as you see, um, along the entire section of Oriole, uh, one was in the one hundred block. Uh, the map that you see up here actually, um, the left side represents south where it says Arden Intermediate. And then um the north of the north is um to the uh right side. Uh, at the four hundred block, there was one accident. Uh, the six hundred block, which is the area right in front of Deer Chase is uh had one accident. Uh, and then we had eight accidents. Um, the seven hundred, eight hundred block uh there at the um vicinity of the intersection with Camp Wisdom. Uh, so um again, they we there's some day pictures of of Deer Chase condos looking north and south. Um, and then we have some evening pictures to follow. Uh, next slide, please.
Wait, 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 wait. Where's the slide that I provided for you from the uh person who lived there?
I have I have pictures that show the evening parking in another in another slide, ma'am.
Okay, that isn't evening parking. It was daytime. And Kristen said she provided it to you?
She did. She did.
She provided the picture to all the council members for them to see. It's probably not part of this presentation, but all the council members received the picture that you provided.
In fact, it 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 follows. It follows this slide.
Okay.
Um, so we also um looked at the speed and as you see here, we had um forty, forty-four percent of of uh drivers exceeded the thirty mile per hour. Um, and then uh but of that three percent is um above forty for forty miles an hour of the thirty uh three thousand seven hundred fifty-eight vehicles that were analyzed. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so again, these are some evening uh that I received on twenty-seven uh January. In both sides, what you're seeing is trucks parking along the west side of Oriole and vicinity of uh the condominium complex. Um, next slide, please. Um, so uh what is proposed uh for your consideration is um a no parking uh zone that extends a hundred feet to the north and south of the entrance to Deer Chase condominiums, and that would be marked with uh curb paint as well as uh signage. Um, and next slide, please. Um, and subject to your questions.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Ramey. Uh, the recommendation uh based on the study is for uh one hundred foot buffers uh to the north and the south on Oriole to the entrance of the condominiums. Uh, any discussion? Yes, Mr. Harvey.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I I appreciate the presentation and I had an opportunity to uh actually go on a property and and look at the conditions uh for myself. So I I'm supportive uh of it. Uh, it would also be good if the apartment management could also help by cutting back on that bush that sits at the front of the property. And when you're coming out of that drive and you look left and you're looking northward, it it that if you could cut that bush back some, that would also help visibility uh uh trying to to uh avoid not getting hit by cars coming southbound on Oriole.
If that uh bush or tree is in the right of way, is the city responsibility to cut it or the uh the HOA?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure it's in the city's right of way. I I don't know.
That's what I'm asking. That's what I'm asking.
The city right of way is the sidewalk.
Okay, so it's a it's a responsibility of the property owner or the HOA. Okay. Okay, good suggestion, Mr. Harvey. Any other discussion? Yes, Mr. Mac Burnett.
And and Mayor, I I as well went over and looked at the property and and the, you know, the same here. If if you're trying to exit out of out of there, it's the it's really the northbound. The cars parked uh on the on the northern part of the entrance that really obstructs the view of for people. And and uh uh the 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 southbound portion's not nearly effective, but also as Councilmember Harvey mentioned, is is yes, I would also suggest recommendation uh to the Homeowners Association to trim the hedge back as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Jameson.
Um, the thing that uh really strikes me also because I'm not coming and going from the property like these people are, but when they're parked along the street, and that's why I wish that they had included the photo in this presentation. You can easily see that um the cars parked there are taking up the majority of the space in the lane. And so if you were trying to travel in that lane, you would have to move over because you don't have a full lane of traffic. Cars parked there.
Kristen can show that photo.
We're pulling it now.
No, that's the one I thought. Yeah, there.
Yeah, those cars parked right there, you could not go in that lane. And this is not even, I have been there when, I don't know if that's one of the really large trucks or not, but there's two or three of those oversized pickup trucks that park along there and you can't travel in that lane. So that's for the rest of the citizens of the city. Um, I mean, this is being requested by the condominiums, but uh you can clearly see there you that that lane is uh being taken up.
Well, I think we have um consensus at least that we believe that this is the right thing to do for that hundred foot buffer north and south. Uh, unless there's any dissenting comment, I think we can go ahead and take a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second, approved by Ms. Jameson and the second by Councilmember Harvey. Uh, so City Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Vera Cruz for or against?
For.
Councilmember Mac Burnett for or against?
For.
Councilmember Anderson for or against?
Against.
Mayor Pro Tem Cooks for or against?
For.
Councilmember Jameson for or against?
For.
At large, Councilmember Harvey for or against? For.
For.
Mayor Gordon for or against?
Or uh by a vote of six to one, the motion is approved. Thank you. We've already considered item five C. Moving on to item five D. Consider resolution approving the terms and conditions of an agreement by and between the City of Dunkville and Wells Fargo Bank in A, which is North America as a merchant processing services provider for an initial term of three year of a three year period with the option to extend the contract for three additional two year periods under the same terms and conditions. Uh, turning the chair, the floor over to Mr. Summerlin.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Uh, next slide, please. So the City of Dunkinville uh is currently contracting with Chase Payment Tech for merchants uh processing services. And we have had for quite some time, some unresolved issues with our uh credit card terminal performance uh in our utility billing area and to some degree in our court services area. And so coupled with that and uh some of the changes that we're making as we move forward with implementing uh our Tyler technology software uh within the utility billing and other areas of the city, we uh decided that it was in our best interest to go out for requests for proposals. So the RFP was advertised and then it focused daily newspaper. It was emailed to fourteen banks. Six of the fourteen banks were minority banks and Valley View Consulting, our investment advisory service firm, assisted staff in obtaining and evaluating the proposals. Next slide, please. We got proposals from Certified Merchant Services, First Data Merchant Services LLC, uh, which is essentially Fiserv, uh BBVA, Impact Pay System, uh LLC, Payzoning, the Independent Bank, Valley Information uh Systems Incorporated and Wells Fargo Bank, North America. Next slide. Evaluation of the proposals were based on the cost of services, the ability to perform the required requested services, reputation of the MPS to provide services based on their references that they um provided, financial strength and stability of the entity, strength of their operating rules and their compliance with PCI and complete was completeness of their entire proposal. Next slide, please. Estimates uh were uh made for interchange and association fees, and they're based on the most recent rates published by Mastercard Visa and discovered at the volume that the city used for uh a one year period based on on uh August nineteenth to July twenty twenty. And these are rates that are set by the card providers. Therefore, they're the same for all of uh those that responded for MPS services. The vendor and the other fees are unique to the individual MPS uh providers. And all fees shown are based on transaction volume as noted above, and they're subject to change, of course, based on the number of credit card uh transactions that we have uh during the course of uh the year. In addition to the fees, the estimated cost to replace the credit card terminals would be an additional uh between seventy-five hundred and sixteen thousand, depending on the type of equipment that's selected in each department. Some of the um departments that have lower volume could probably use cheaper terminals that aren't quite as fast. Uh, and those where we process a higher volume, like in court and utility billing, would probably need a little better machine. Uh, next slide, please. So um, wanted to show you the chart of how how uh the uh each one of those um providers that responded to our request for proposal, how they ranked. And so you can see the um interchange uh and the association fees are the same. The the second and third lines are the same all the way across. And so then the vendor um uh services and the other fees are the only thing that there's that are different. And so these are ranked from the highest uh down to the lowest. Wells Fargo came in next to the lowest with BBA Fiserv as being the lowest bidder. Uh, next slide, please. So uh conclusion um was that based on the strengths of the proposals, uh BBVA and Wells Fargo, we invited them to provide online demonstrations of their proposals and to explain how how they would go about providing the services and. and also to talk about what their customer service represent representation would be to us. That's been one of the the things that we've have had problems with with our our current merchant service provider. Representatives from the Purchasing Finance and the IT Departments evaluated the demos from BBVA and Wells Fargo. And Wells Fargo, though slightly higher at about six thousand four hundred ninety-two per year, was deemed the clear winner and the best value. Next slide, please. So based on that evaluation, staff recommends approval of a resolution to approve Wells Fargo Bank, North America as our merchant processing services provider for an initial term of a three-year period with the option to extend the contract for a three-year additional for I'm sorry, for three additional two-year periods under the same terms and conditions. And next slide. Any questions?
Yes, sir. Mr. Summerlin, if you could give us just a little more detail on Wells Fargo being the quote-unquote clear winner. And I understand the value part, but what facets came into that declaration of Wells Fargo being the clear winner in terms of their proprietary systems, their compatibility with our systems, their performance over long term? Just just a little bit of, you know, a little bit of detail on on how they were deemed the clear winner.
There were two primary categories that they were clearly superior in, and those categories were, they gave us a dedicated point of contact that they would gave us great assurance that that would be our point of contact for any kind of customer service-related issues. Whereas BBVA really couldn't commit to having any particular group or any particular person as our point of contact. And then when it came to the demos, Wells Fargo, their team clearly demonstrated absolute command of the software and the system that we would have access to and clearly walked us through, answered all our questions. And that even though the software was essentially the studying for BBVA, their presentation team was just sloppy, to say the least. They couldn't answer our questions. They didn't know the software very well. And they he-hawed, most most importantly, they he-hawed around when we asked questions about different things, especially about their their dedicated customer service team.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that explanation. I see a hand from Mayor Pro Tim Cooks. Mr. Cooks.
Hey, Richard, was the delivery of funds about the same of of getting next day availability or same day availability when using one over the other?
Yeah, there was essentially no difference.
Okay. And and then, by the way, just for the record, I know many call that North America, but N A really stands for National Association. So just for the record.
Oh, sorry.
Right.
My bad. Okay, any other comments? Ah, Ms. Jameson?
Do you remember, Richard, in two thousand seventeen, but it was a different council, and we had a discussion about Wells Fargo and their predatory predatory behavior towards customers and that we wanted to see you move away from Wells Fargo? And you you presented some real pushback about how much trouble it would be. And we said, we wanted you to move away from Wells Fargo. Dallas, Dallas County, a lot of the entities have done that because of Wells Fargo behave their behavior towards customers. And we asked you to do that.
So I was I was on the council at that time, Mr. Jameson, not two thousand seventeen. No, I was on council in two thousand eighteen, and I remember the subject being brought up by you.
No, it was not. It was brought up by Leslie Thomas.
As we discussed it, there was cogent information given to us by Mr. Summerlin at that time not to move away from Wells Fargo. What I want to interject is that no major banking institution, financial institution in our country has gone without some type of indictment by either the SEC, the Federal Reserve, or the FDIC, which are the three regulatory federal agencies overseeing our banking institutions. The and to put it into perspective as well, in terms of my experience in dealing with credit and merchant processing services is what we're looking at here, those are siloed agencies within the umbrella corporations. They have their own presidents, their own vice presidents, and this is a banking service as a business. In terms of the predatory practices of the loan merchants within the Wells Fargo, they've been.
It wasn't loan merchants.
Loan officers, call it what you wish.
They were setting up accounts that that were not real and selling them products.
Understand.
By the way, I was speaking.
The issue.
I was speaking. You just butt in. I was speaking.
You may continue.
I understand your point of view, and thank you. It was it was not their loan practices. That was one part of it, but there were many, many issues about their behavior towards customers. They were setting up bank accounts and selling them products. There was all sorts of things. And we just felt like like a lot of other cities did that it it did not send the right message that we were providing. We were allowing them to use taxpayer money to continue to flourish when, you know, they have some some real issues with the way they treated people. And no, what Mr. Summerlin said at the time was it was a big hassle. It was a lot of trouble. It was a lot of work to move the accounts out. It was a lot, it it, you know, and and I can take that on a a level of a household, and it would be a lot of work. It would be a lot of work for us to move everything away. But I tell you what, if my bank ever treated me that way, I would be gone no matter what department. You don't treat your clients, your customers that way. You do not. And it does not send a good message to citizens when we use their money in an institution that doesn't treat people well. I'm through.
Thank you for your input and comments. Are there any other comments that wish to be made? Going back to what I said in terms of understanding with Wells Fargo, they were indicted, they were fined. And what we're looking at now is going back to Mr. Summerlin's comments in terms of who has the best service for us in merchant processing services. We have two contenders. It's either BBVA or Wells Fargo. And Wells Fargo, as explained by Mr. Summerlin, brought the best team and the best competency to bear on this issue. So in that respect, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve of Mr. McBurnett. We have a second by Councilmember Harvey unless you're raising a hand to discuss. Is that a second? That is a second by Mr. Harvey. Thank you very much. City Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Veracruz for our against.
For.
Councilmember McBurnett for our against.
For.
Councilmember Anderson for our against.
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Cooks for our against.
For.
Councilmember Jameson for our against. You're muted.
Against.
At-large Councilmember Harvey for our against.
For.
Mayor Gordon for our against.
For by account, a vote of six to one, the motion is approved. Thank you very much, City Council. Moving on to item five E, consider appointments to boards and commissions being appointments to fill existing vacancies on the zoning board of adjustment and the sign control board. Based on just, okay, City Secretary, Ms. Downs.
Next slide, please. Okay, so this is basically the same slide from the briefing session. We have currently one opening for the zoning board of adjustment, one opening for the sign control board, and we have three citizens who have shown interest. And below you will see the names of the applicants, what boards they are interested in. And now I turn that over to y'all.
Thank you for that, City Secretary Downs. We had some discussion in our briefing session about this. Now, the chair will entertain a motion to approve these positions and appointments.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tim Cooks. I have a second.
Sir, I would need y'all to pick one person for each board.
Okay, so it would be motion to approve Mr. Edward Stith.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I'm understanding it, isn't there, Kristen, isn't there two vacancies and we have three people?
Correct. Mr. Stith would go on the sign control board, zoning board of adjustment. He's willing to go on both. The same for Mr. Avery. Mr. Jared Davis only showed that he would like the zoning board of adjustment. So I would need one appointment for the zoning board of adjustment and one appointment for the sign control board.
Can I can I make a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is to appoint Mr. Javar Avery to the sign control board and appoint Mr. Edwards Stith to the zoning board of adjustment.
Kristen, did you need those individually or can it be in aggregate as Mr. Harvey has just stated?
We can do it how Mr. Harvey just stated.
Okay, would you repeat that again, Mr. Harvey, please?
Yes, sir, I will. I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Javar Avery to the sign control board and appoint Mr. Edwards Stith to the zoning board of adjustment.
Thank you. And we have a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Veracruz has seconded. City Secretaries, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Veracruz for our against.
For.
Councilmember McBurnett for our against.
For.
Councilmember Anderson for our against.
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Cooks for our against.
For.
Councilmember Jameson for our at-large Councilmember Harvey for our against.
For.
Mayor Gordon for our against.
For. Thank you. The motion is unanimously approved. Moving on to item five F, which is taking unnecessary action as a result of executive sessions. We have no actions to take as a result of the two executive sessions. Moving on to item number six, staff and board reports. The first that we have, now, we have been provided these reports already. There is some significant information in all of this, all everything that we've been provided. I think it might benefit council if we got some information from each of these individuals, if you don't mind taking the time. Unless there are any specific questions that you have on on any of these five that we have. So Mr. Mr. Summerlin, would you give us an overview, please, of our portfolio summary? Based on what I've seen, it's like we're almost paying somebody to keep our money. Everything's in decline. Go ahead.
Next slide, please. The, a next slide, please. So if we look at our portfolio at the end of December, you can see that we have quite a bit of investment in certificates of deposit. Thankfully, those are spread out over time, so I was able to lock in some yield before we had as much decline in interest rates as we've had, which is keeping me as I show later on, it's keeping me in terms of the investments for the city well above our benchmark benchmarks that 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 we judge ourselves against. For the logic pool, we have about seventeen percent of our portfolio in there, and then the remainder are in money market funds at about thirty percent. Terms of our investments by maturity, we stay in very liquid. We've got thirty-five million under thirty days and then two million thirty to ninety days and four million ninety to a hundred and eighty days, and then twenty-six point five million, a hundred and eighty days to one year. And next slide, please. This is the.
I was muted. Richard, what is your benchmark? You said you're you're comfortable with what we're doing based on your benchmark. What is it?
Demonstrated right here on this slide, our benchmark is against the ninety-day T bill, which you can see is the 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 red line, the lowest line essentially on this chart, spanning the period of twelve thirty-one twenty plus, going back to nine thirty twenty. So the city performance is the blue line. You can see there's a clear gap above that in our ninety-day T bill. Logic is another benchmark that we look at. So if we just had all of our money in the logic government pool, we would be, you know, following that that curve down there at about forty basis points. Text pool is the sort of purple line that's in between the ninety-day T bill and logic. So those are the three benchmarks that that we look at. And we would have the opportunity to, you know, to have investments in, you know, all of those things. But because I have some money in logic and the government pools, but then I have a lot of it in CDs, as demonstrated on the previous pie chart, you can see that that causes my yield to be gapped up a little, starting out during this this period of six months of being up around one percent and then, you know, falling falling down to an average on the portfolio of between sixty and eighty basis points. So somewhere around seventy basis points as we ended the quarter in December.
Very good. Thank you.
Above the benchmarks.
Thank you. Unless, do you, I personally, I don't see a need to go through all the raw data that you provided on the next, what, four charts, unless anybody has any questions. Is anything you'd like to add from these two?
And now just that, you know, we continue to try to monitor the the money that we come in. We go out for solicitation on CD bids and try to lock in the highest yield that we can find. It's becoming much more competitive. The last time that I bid out a CD, I only had about four banks that responded. So that's telling me that the banks, for the most part, don't want your money.
Exactly, yeah. That's what I'm saying. We almost have to pay somebody to to take the money from us. Okay. Thank you very much.
I do have a question.
Any comments? Yeah.
Hey, Richard, so when you're looking for those CDs, by the way, is that traditional, but you should using just a traditional bank where you where you're looking up the rate or are you going through your financial advisor who also search for different register CDs?
That's one of the services that they provide, and I I let them go out and do the solicitation for those. And so they they have contacts all over, all over the state and they're just it's amazing the number of contacts they have. They know they know people. They're in that business.
So you're saying you you use them to to do that search for you for the higher rate?
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all. No question, Mayor. Thanks.
All right, good. Thank you very much. All right, if we can, let's move on to item B, which is receive the Police Department twenty twenty racial profiling report, and that's by Assistant Chief Mark Levigny. Chief?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity tonight to provide our twenty twenty racial profiling report. Next slide. So it's a it's a mandated report by law to be provided. So it's a, it's a mandated report by law to be provided to our governing body, you, the council, each year by March first. Given the storm we, we had to weather, and as, as mentioned earlier, we did so as champions. We, and we had our council meeting canceled. We had to individually send the report out electronically for our council persons to meet this requirement. But we thought to, in the name of transparency, to provide that report tonight or the highlights thereof. So this report's based off motor vehicle stops in which resulted in citation, a warning, an arrest, or a search. And there were six categories on which comparative analysis, which is required, are, were based. And those are policy formulation requirement, an educational, an educational requirement of our personnel regarding complaint process of the public education of that process, and Texas law regarding collection of the raw data that we collected. And then finally, of the racial profiling information reported to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement or TECO. Next slide. So there was an independent analysis we contracted with Justice Research Consultants, and their analysis determined that in all six categories, the Duncanville Police Department is fully compliant, and that's a reflection personnel we have working with at our department. And that is, that is the report, the highlights of the report. If there are any questions, I'd be willing to entertain those.
Thank you very much, Chief, and we're very pleased to see that our police department, as expected, is fully compliant along all these aspects of law. Are there any comments with any council member wishes to make on this? Okay, seeing none. Again, thank you very much, both chiefs, and for our entire police department, all of our law enforcement officers are, are doing what they have to do in order for this report to come out this way. We thank them very, very much for their compliance and obedience to the law and taking care of our citizens safely. Thank you very much. Moving on, monthly financial report, again, from Mr. Summerlin. And if you wanted to hit the highlights, you'd be more than welcome to, Mr. Summerlin.
Okay, next slide, please. So January is the fourth month, of course, in the fiscal year, and our benchmark, if revenues and expenditures were spent evenly, would be thirty-three point three percent of the budget. And next slide. Our general fund ending unreserved fund balance is twenty point six million, two hundred and thirty-five days of operations. Have to always put in the caveat that this is the time of the year where we've collected the majority of our property taxes. In fact, we've collected seventy-eight point eight percent of our budget. And our sales tax revenue is trailing about three point six percent lower than it did the same time last year, and again, due to the COVID effect. And overall, our general fund revenues are at about fifty-two point eight percent, and our operating expenditures are twenty-four point four percent. So our expenditure side, we're well under that benchmark. Next slide, please. This is the graph of the general fund revenues overall, and you can see how we collect that sales tax between November and end of February, and then it begins to tail off after that spike. Next slide, please. And this lasers out the property tax revenue. Again, you see that same general spike over those months and then a leveling out for the remainder of the year. Next slide, please. Our general fund, the sales tax revenue, as I explained, we're traveling right along that previous three-year average, but that's below, a little bit below where we budgeted. You see the red numbers on the actuals. Next slide, please. And then we look at our expenditures. Again, that's a saving grace that so far we're trending below our budgeted levels. Next slide, please. Going to the utility fund, the ending fund balance, two point four million. After we take out our five million for AMI, we've got forty-four days of operations. That's less than the optimal sixty days of operations, as I've warned about before. Water and sewer revenues, of course, are one month in it rears, so this is only reflective of three months, October, November, and December. And the sanitation fund has an ending fund balance of about two hundred, seven hundred and twenty thousand, which is sixty-four days of operations, about four days above that target sixty day. Next slide. Same thing, looking at our utility fund revenues, graphing those out. Next slide, please. Expenditures still below the budget on the utility fund, which is good news. Next slide, please. Our one-time project funds, just sort of a reiteration of those and how, how, how they've stacked up what we have left at, at, at this point in the end of January. Next slide, please. This is something you guys asked me last fall, I believe it was, to start including in the financial report. So these are the top ten sales tax generator, generators, and you can see how our FY twenty rank was the first top ten. And then essentially the rank in fiscal year twenty-one. A little bit of jockeying around a position. The twenty rank at Costco, eighty-four lumber, the Ford's, TXU, Amazon Marketplace, Kroger, Papa's Restaurants, Amazon Fulfillment Services, and New Singular Wireless in businesses, AT&amp;T, and Harbor Freight. And then when you look at the twenty-one, it's Costco, eighty-four lumber, Amazon Marketplace, Amazon Fulfillment Services. Those are no surprise that those jockeyed around with people staying at home during COVID. And then TXU, Papa's Restaurants, Kroger, AT&amp;T, Whataburger, and West Camp Wisdom, the edge step in that top ten, and then Harbor Freight. And that's the conclusion of my report.
Richard, quick question. Where do the funds, the CARES Act funds received and expended show up in these charts or, or are they exclusive because everything was done separately?
Well, to, to the greatest degree, they're excluded. There was some CARES Fund that contributed to our, our ending fund balance as, as we went through that and, and I, I will, I will be providing some, some more updates on that, but there was a contribution from the CARES Act for, for reimbursements of costs that contributed to our fund balance for FY twenty ending much higher than what we budgeted it for.
Okay. Thanks very much. So they, they're in there somewhere. Yes, Mr. Cooks.
Richard, and maybe not on this one, on your next report, can you share a little bit about any funds that are transferred from water utilities to, from the, to the general fund? Can you talk about some point? It don't have to be, it don't have to be now, but in one of your next reports, citizens often see that, and very thank you, we're pulling from the water utility funds to the general fund. So when you're next reporting, can you spend a little bit more time or perhaps making it a footnote to always talk about that until more people kind of get accustomed to why that, why that happens?
Yeah, and, and, and a real short summary form, the, the only transfer we make is one that is, it's less than what's recommended by the water rate study to cover the cost of all the, the, the people that contribute, things like from the IT department, other administrative overhead. They contribute to the water fund, but they're not paid out of the water fund. The water fund is a, a unique business. Enterprise fund is the way it's classified, and so it has to be self-sustaining by the revenues that, that, that come into it. And, but there are services provided, for instance, all of us in, in finance, we do all the accounting, and we also do a lot of management for utility billing. But we're not paid from there. And so part of that transfer is to cover the overhead cost of the services that those of us that are not paid out of the utility fund provide.
Thank you. And I love that short answer. Thank you. I would also just still ask, just for a citizen's standpoint, because you share with us every month. However, if you add a slide to that for the sake of our citizens who sometime may not know it that way, or may have a new citizen. If you could always add that to a slide or presentation, it may help with communicating with citizens on how, why they see money transferred out. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to item six D, the library quarterly report, Mr. Velazquez.
That's Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Next slide, please. So with the library, with COVID restrictions, we had been limited closing, but we were able to open up once things were relaxed to offer services to our citizens. We always had available our online services, and once we're able to offer in-person services, we did have our limited computers and whatnot available. We, we have continued to offer curbside and home delivery, and those have still been taken advantage by our patrons. Next slide, please. We've started a new initiative, which is weekly stories with Ms. Danine, who's our turn and librarian, because we had limited numbers of coming in person. We started doing this as a on-demand video on a weekly basis. So patrons were able to watch this at their leisure, and we have several of these that we already have stocked up that they can watch during Black History Month. We did have a couple of online programs, storytellers, and some take-home crafts that we made available to patrons to pick up when they visited the library. Next slide, please. We did, we were able utilizing the CARES Act funding to buy some new computer furniture, which allowed us to offer more computers to our patrons in a social distancing manner. This brand new furniture, Muntia had a picture of that in her report. I believe there's a picture of this here on the next slide as well. So next slide, please. So that's our furniture that we have, and we're able to set that up so patrons could take advantage of our available technology safely spaced out in the library and utilize that as necessary. Next slide, please. Any questions? That's all I have today.
Thank you, Mr. Velazquez, and to you and all of your staff that are working through the, the issues when we had our ice storm and snow by doing the best possible service that we could. Our kudos to you for, for making some Herculean efforts with that. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Item six E, Republic Works Department Quarterly Report, Mr. Ramey.
Good evening, Mayor and, and council. Again, we'll be talking about the public works update for the first quarter. So this is capturing our metrics from October, November, December, as well as just updating you on our accomplishments between, from when we last briefed through this time. Next slide, please. So we hired three additional utility maintenance workers. We are still behind and have more to fill, but we did, you know, we're continuously hiring new maintenance workers. Next slide, please. And then we hired a new building inspector. Randy Goucher was our previous building inspector. He was promoted to building official when Jim Slackter retired. Next slide, please. So a recent accomplishment, something that we've talked about previously tonight was Winter Storm twenty twenty-one, and that was really involved our streets division and utilities division with support from traffic and equipment services. And again, just want to echo Mayor and, and council when thanking the residents of Duncanville for their efforts, as well as the efforts of our industrial and commercial businesses in helping us conserve water so that we could maintain the water that we needed to, again, fight the fire at the green and keep it, water pressure and supplies up to avoid the boil notice. Just some pictures to highlight this. On the lower left is one of our, one of the three aerial water lines that cross over I twenty. This particular line is a ten-inch line. That's an older line, and it actually burst in several locations all along the length. So that was one of the things that, when we found it, we capped, helped, you know, again, get, get the water supplies back up. The repair, the replacement of that entire line is a CIP that we are going to be doing. And then the other slide again is just a picture of one of our spreaders in action. As you, we talked about, the spreaders were put down the ice chat on all our bridges across the arterials at the intersections and then other key locations, as identified by the emergency manager to help with emergency response. Next slide, please. Main thing for planning, we work towards the zoning update, which was actually approved tonight. Next slide, please. And code enforcement, we just wanted to highlight, just cleaning up some issues with renovation at Don Taco, but also highlighting on, that you'll see on the right-hand picture is actually a new parking lot at the Harbor Freight Shopping Center, which has been a, a work in progress for several years of, of, of working with that property manager and, and citations, and, and we're got a new parking lot. Finally, next slide, please. The sidewalks, we're finishing up in West Park. We've got a little bit left to go on Center Street, and following that, we will head south to the neck, to the neighborhood due south, which is Mary, Mary Brook Estates or Mary Brook Park, which is the, the neighborhood just to the south of this one will be where our sidewalk crew focuses. And then some other efforts of the street department was that we did a project up on Longworth with a drainage project, and then you know, Bart's brought up in his parks and rec reports was our support to his department with the new parking lot at Lakeside Park. Next slide, please. Just moving into our metrics, again, this is for first quarter of twenty twenty-one. The valve exerciser, again, we appreciate council when we were able to get allocated the funds to buy the new valve exerciser. We're slowly getting out there, but as soon as we got it, we hit COVID, and that really affected our ability to flex our teams is when we had to go to split shifts, and our manpower continues to hurt us, but it'd be a lot lower if we didn't have the valve exerciser. Next slide, please. The tanks, so that is a something that we do in the spring, summer, so that's not of concern right now. And then with the lateral lines, we repair those as needed. Our goal is that we would at least touch a hundred, you know, ten percent a year. And we've done, we've done six of, in first quarter. Next slide, please. For street maintenance, again, the, the utility cuts are, are low, but again, we've been slowed down. A lot of that was in first quarter was the additional support we did at Lakeside Park as well as on Longworth. So our, well, we used most of the street crew on those two projects. So our, we used most of the street crew on those two projects. And that delayed our ability to get in and do the final repairs of the, you know, full repair to the utility cuts. Next slide, please. Traffic cabinets, again, we're looking good on operational readiness and the cabinets that we in the intersection that we rewire, those are done in the spring and summer all at once. Next slide, please. And equipment services, the patrol vehicles, one, the, the main issue with the ninety percent is we had one of our police cars crash. And, and so it's been down, the, the car is on order. But we, but with all the city vehicles, we find that they, we have an exceedingly long delay from when we get these ordered to them when they actually are delivered. The fire apparatus, we have the two engines up at Fire Station One are old. We have a new, we ordered a new fire engine back at the beginning of the fiscal year. It's a year out, but what you're looking at is some downtime due to the fact that we have one fire engine that's ten years old and one fire engine that is twenty one years old. And a lot of those repairs are tied to the twenty one year old fire being down. The ambulances, we just had some issues with some suspensions and no issues with the back hose or our heavy duty trucks. Next slide, please. Here's our statistics on code compliance. The commercial permits, again, we had a delay in issuing those permits in our, in our target timeframe. A lot, that was also due to COVID and how long it took for us to get the, the reviews completed within the COVID environment. Next slide, please. And then just turn it over to y'all for any questions you may have.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Ramey. I see Mr. Harvey. Yes, please.
This, this very quickly, I was I was, I was surprised to learn from Mr. Rainey just a few seconds ago that we have the ambulance in service, I mean, a high apparatus in service that's twenty one years old. I thought the whole idea behind the vehicle replacement program was to have relatively newer vehicles in service. Is that a frontline? Is that a frontline vehicle?
Negative, sir. So we, we replace, we bring in a new engine at both locations every ten years. And so when we hit ten years on our frontline, which was last year, twenty twenty, we ordered a new fire engine. And it is, it, it's on way, it's on order. But they take about a year to arrive. And so what we're looking at is we have one fire engine on order, one fire engine, frontline engine that is about ready to rotate into the reserve. And then we have the, a reserve fire engine that is about ready to age out of the system as soon as our new fire engine is, is delivered from the factory.
That's the twenty one year old.
The twenty one year old will be the one that ages out. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from Mr. Ramey or questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much, City Council and staff for your participation tonight. Excellent meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Mr. Cooks.
I thought you were going to mention something about when we come out of the executive session, what, how we
Oh, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry. Yep. Thank you for that reminder. Let me go back here. Yes.
Five F.
Yeah, going to, well, the, the issue was, you know, give an explanation on the executive session where it talks about the city manager, which is executive session two. There were some questions that some citizens had, like, why are you having an executive session when the city manager's only been on the job for a week? And it's because of the legal language that has to be used, the city council is only responsible and able to discuss one individual on staff, and that's the city manager. That's the only single appointed position that the city council has authority over. So legally, that's all we can say. What the true discussion was, was not about Ms. Farrell Benavides, but it was about Mr. Paul Fredrickson. And the discussion about Mr. Fredrickson was what a great job he's done. We, so we patted him on the back about a thousand times and, and decided that he's doing a pretty good job and we ought to keep him for a little while. So the, the result of that is that that's what the executive session was about. So just to clear up any confusion on the part of our citizens, we were not looking at the performance of Ms. Farrell Benavides, but actually discussing what could be. Well, I'll leave it at that in, in terms of what Mr. Fredrickson has done and in his yeoman service over the course of his service as appointed interim city manager. So long answer to a short question, but I think, Mr. Cooks, you had anything you wanted to amplify on that?
I just wanted, again, publicly, again, I didn't get to say that, to thank Mr. Paul Fredrickson for his role, the interim city manager. A great, great job, great job of leading the staff, leadership, of course, just was beyond, beyond the approach. Thank you, Paul. We really appreciate you. It wasn't until the end of your, of this term that I did not like you. And I'll explain that because I shared with Paul that I was in Austin doing some hiking and then I broke my ankle and had to have surgery on it. And the first thing Paul said was, can I have your bike? So, and I liked it before he said all of that, but Paul, no, thank you for all you done. I really appreciate you, sir. And I know you need to do well for us, and thank you.
I, I haven't seen the bike yet either, so.
Yeah, we, Paul, it's, it's, it's a great honor to have you on our staff and, and for what you did getting us through this time of acting as not acting, but being interim city manager. I know that you were wearing three hats and it was extraordinary, extraordinary performance. We all appreciate it. And I know that your leadership provided all the, the aptitudes and the excellence exhibited by all of our staff down to the very, very lowest level because of their faith and respect for you, which all of us have as well. Mr. McNabb, did you have a comment?
I, I was just gonna thank Paul again as well. And, and once Mark's ankle heals up, he probably has a bike for you that he'll give you.
There you go. Well, I'm, I'm excited to have Aretha here and we've, we've really hit the ground running and, and I'm looking forward to working with her. I think we're gonna do some with Aretha at, at the head of the team. We're gonna do some good things. So I'm looking forward to it.
Mr. Hager has his hand up.
Yes, Bob.
Mayor and council, one of the things, just for clarification, I want to reiterate what the mayor said initially about this item being as it appeared on the agenda. This was actually carried over from your last meeting that had to be canceled as a result of the pandemic. And that's why it was listed that way. So that's why it was carried forward. As, as we have all pointed out, the manager is the sole employee that's subject to the council's purview, which Paul would have been last week. So just so that someone doesn't think that we're violating the charter or that we're not taking appropriate action. It was really a carryover from the last meeting and just way it kind of turned out. And on behalf of the city attorney's office, we would like to thank Paul as well for I had the, I don't know if distinction or privilege to be in the room when we were meeting over the, the water system and Paul and his staff was outstanding. What little I had to offer was just writing things up for the mayor to sign and whatnot. But it was, it was really interesting to sit and watch that happen. So again, to Paul and, and Ms. Farrell Benavides, you have a great staff and we enjoy working with them and the rest of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other closing comments? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for this evening and the timestamp, we are adjourned at nine twenty five.